Okay, Mr. Tracy, are we ready on the Zoom?
We are on.
Okay. And so I would like to call it the meeting to order on this Thursday, Sept- Thursday, December 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. I'll call the School Committee, Hamilton One and Regional School Committee meeting to order. And our first item is I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask that any citizen who wishes to make a comment, if you're here in the room, you could approach the podium to let us know that you want to speak. I asked you to speak, keep your, limit your comments to three minutes. I also have realized that I have been lax in asking our citizens to do this. Please state your name, your address, and please spell your name so that we can get it accurately on the minutes. There's also an opportunity for citizens to make a comment on Zoom, for those people that are on Zoom. Oh, which reminds me, I'm sorry, excuse me, to remind all that this meeting is being recorded and it's also being livestreamed on HW Cam. Okay, so I'm going to open up citizens' comments and remind you all that we are here to listen and we are very grateful for your thoughts. And so I'm going to start with in the room. If there's anyone who would like to offer a comment, you can please approach the podium. I'm going to ask, I don't think there's a microphone on the podium, which we're going to need at some point. Oh, it's for Zoom. Oh, got it. I understand. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Tracy, do we have any members who, members of the public who are on Zoom who would like to offer a comment this evening?
If you are on Zoom and would like to offer a comment, please raise your hand.
Okay. No?
Yep.
Nobody? Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is our review of the committee protocols. The committee has, over the past several meetings, reviewed the protocols and at our most recent meeting, we actually reaffirmed or renewed our commitment to these protocols. I'm not going to read all, the whole document. What I'm going, like to do, my intent by having this at the top of our agenda is really to just bring it forward in our minds so that these protocols are, you know, always present as we enter into these meetings. So I'm going to just read the very first opening, opening line. So these are from our, this is the opening of the 2021-2022 School Committee Superintendent protocols. As elected members of the Hamilton One and Regional School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. So that is just a way of starting, focus our intention for the meeting, if you will. Next, I would ask, I guess I can make a motion, I guess. I would like to just make an adjustment to the order of the agenda. Craig, can I ask, does it feel like we're ready to do the?
There's a lot of kids that are.
Yes? Okay. Because I want to move you guys up. Okay. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to move that we adjust the order of the agenda to move forward as our next item of business, item 6A, which is the athletic recommendations. Do you have a second?
A second.
Second by Michelle Horgan. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right. And the motion passes unanimously. And now I would like to invite Craig Genualdo to come up and provide us with some athletic recognitions.
Thank you very much for having us. Very honored to be here. So at the end of each athletic season, we like to honor the individuals and teams and groups that have kind of gone above and beyond and had some success that is very, very noteworthy. We cherish all of our athletes. We cherish all of our teams regardless of record, regardless of individual accomplishment. We're about the experience and not about the accolades, but it is important, I think, because the young people that you'll see here tonight and their coaches represent all of us and any success that happens is a result of their team's success. And so I say that just kind of off the top. The other thing is, we like to do this after each season. Last spring and last school year was such a anomaly that the spring ended so late. A lot of our teams ended very, very, very end of June and then the accolades came after in early July and there wasn't really a chance to properly honor them. There was some incredible accomplishments last year, some of whom are in college right now. I wouldn't mention their name. Obviously they're out there doing bigger and better things and I wanted to give this a school committee, I'm not sure of freshmen or college students. So we're going to honor them and we're going to acknowledge them. We have some of them here tonight and we'll also go through the incredible fall successes that we had this past year. So in the spring, we're just going to go in alphabetical order by team. The baseball team won the Cape Town League and they had two players that were named Lee Co-MVP. They're now in college, Ryan Hutchinson and Luke McClintock. Captains of that team in addition to those two gentlemen were Token Clark Coffield and Kyra Coffey. The boys lacrosse team had some individual accolades last year. First team Eastern Mass was Andrew Winsh, Peter Godot, Grant Landon. Eastern Mass Academic All-American was Grant Landon and the Cal Sportsman's Video, who are very proud of, is Max Lockhart. Any of them are here today, but to the college, they were. The next team we'd like to call up is the girls lacrosse team. Coach Abby Shively's here, who's going to introduce an award winner that she had. The girls lacrosse team was the 2021 Cal Team Sportmanship Award winner. Abby, who we're going to call up here in a second, was the Cal Coach of the Year and she's going to introduce an incredible young athlete that we have that's coming back this year and we're very excited about that. So Abby, can you come up over here?
Just want to introduce a very special player, Haley Hamilton, who's senior this year. She, to my knowledge, is the very first All-American for girls lacrosse, which is an incredible honor. She earned this honor with her hard work, her dedication and her performance on the field. She's going off to play at Millberry College, which is very exciting and without Haley, we wouldn't have had the success that we did last year. She's been a leader on the team. She's a captain this year and I'm sure she's going to lead us to many victories this spring. So.
Before we go on, I think it's, you know, we don't, there's a lot of athletes that aren't here tonight because we had the DECA competition today and the award ceremony is actually happening as we speak. So for the current athletes, a bunch of which were here today, they're behind us now. It's pretty exciting that they're here. So the other captains for the last year's girls lacrosse team that won the Cal Sportmanship Award were Andrew Fusco and a lot of many more, very happy for them. Next, I want to just call up George Shapiro here, our softball coach, to stand next to me. Can you come on up, George? The girls softball team last year, you know, there's a big push in the league to not just give the sportmanship award to the team that doesn't win stuff and so that's a huge priority because these girls went above and beyond all year, whether it was in our own community or other communities. We had a player, we called Manchester last year, we had a player get hurt early in the year, it was a pretty tough injury to see and they supported her even well after that happened. And George is an incredible example of that. George's captains last year were Kaylee, Kelly Moore, Kaylee Hills and Abby Hope. And I just want to thank you, George. It's not, you know, we're going to talk later in our budget presentation about how we're about educational athletics, we're not about winning. It's nice when we win, it's nice when kids get to college and all that stuff and these individual athletes, we love when our teams are, you know, doing the right thing in terms of sportmanship. So thanks, buddy. The last, the last spring team that we don't, there are no representatives here because again, the coach has to work and the young, the captains of college. The boys tennis team won the Cal Championship last year and their captain was Clinton Wilkins. So if you're watching, congratulations to them. You know, it's the first time we've had a new boys tennis coach in a while and he did a great job, so we're excited about that. Onto the fall, as many of you know, we had an incredible, incredible run this year of all of our teams in the fall. The MIAA had a statewide tournament, a true statewide tournament for the first time where, you know, the first round, you play somebody, you know, in Western Mass and they rank you and this whole stuff. It was kind of, it was the culmination of a two-year project by the State Athletic Association that they looked at it, they did this thing called the Uber Commission and they looked at all terms of equity, whether it was gender-based, whether it was socially-based, whether it was size of school or type of school, rural, urban, suburban, and stuff like that. And they really tried to place people in divisions which made sense. And as soon as they did that, our teams went nuts, basically. All of our teams qualified, all of our teams advanced, some of which hadn't even qualified for a state tournament for a while. So I think it's important to recognize them. Golf qualified for the state regionals. Boys cross country qualified for the all-state championships. Boys soccer and field hockey advanced to the Sweet 16 round in their tournaments. Volleyball and football advanced to the Elite Eight round of the state tournament. Incredible stuff. Volleyball captains were, if I said, Leonard, are there any volleyball captains here?
That's right there.
So briefly, I've played with a class of 89, I believe, has been our coach for 11 years and was the first belt Hall of Famer in our induction class in 2016. She was named the Cal Coach of the Year. This team won the Cal Sportmanship Award in addition to advancing to the Elite Eight. They played, you know, it was a tough Cal competition in the Cape Town League. There were three teams that were in the top four in the state, so, you know, might not have had the Cal title, but definitely represented our league well. And one of the reasons they won the league sportmanship award, which again, we loved, and they did the winning and they won the sportmanship thing, they had unbelievable, we did a coat drive, but they, I don't know how many coats, but I think I still owe them cookies, but I think I'm pretty sure I promised them cookies, I gotta get on. But I just wanted to mention Coach Flynn stepping down this year, she's been with us for 11 years, incredible, incredible coach, but one of the best humans you could ever possibly pull to be in the league on her with Coach of the Year, which was great in addition to the team's success. So like I said, Mia and Hannah, thank you for being here. You know, if anyone was at that game, it was a packed gym. There's probably more people than I've ever seen in the gym in a long, long time and you all played great and so I just, we wanted to thank you and recognize you, so thank you for being here tonight. They're off to do incredible things, certainly. I don't, I think Ava's here, did I see Ava Cody back there? Our girls cross country team, you know, never stops doing well, I think, I don't know if it's like their 18th spring year or whatever, I don't know how many spring years that won the Cape Town League, it's unbelievable. Cape Town League champs, Coach Steve Sawyer, who I once asked, how many Coach of the Years do you think you won? I don't know. Where do you think you have all the plaques? I don't know. I said, you think it's over 30? I said higher. So she was Cal Coach of the Year again, want to recognize him. The captains in addition to Ava were Alexis Donovan, Sayeed Khan and Claire Curdwell. Ava Cody, I think for the second year in a row, have I read about that? Cape Town League Cross Country Runner of the Year for the girls side. You're incredible and I've watched you run and if I had to drive as fast as you run, I'd get exhausted, so I don't know how to do that. You're absolutely amazing and I know you're going to do incredible things, so congratulations on your Coach, on your Player of the Year, but more importantly, your team's success and all that good stuff, so thank you. Do it on this year. So, it's, it's outside control. Some other teams, the football team this year had the Cal Player of the Year, Krista Maraki, I think he's at basketball practice right now. Incredible kid, sings in the choir, he's just a super, super talented kid. I'm proud to say he's in my advisory and we have some good discussions about. Who else? Golf won the Cal Sportmanship Award, I think that's like four Cal Sportship Awards, which I can only take very, very seriously. The captains for that are Peter Godot, who's playing hockey right now, Morgan Glavsky and Jack Bobb. I won't pick any of those, you know, incredible kids. All right. So finally, we've had, you know, we know we had some pretty good success here. I'm going to invite Coach Waddell up. The girls soccer team this year had an incredible run, as we know. You know, we know they were state champs, we know that Coach Waddell, hey, there it is, I haven't, I haven't seen this in a while. She kind of, it was, it was on the field and I haven't seen it since. I know it's been making its way Stanley Cup style around the players. And one of the things I love about Coach Waddell and, you know, Nancy is she won, she's all about the experience, whether you're winning or whether you're an okay team or whatever. I think every kid is, has a turn with the trophy and it gets a journal about it, the journal gets passed around. Everything with Coach, who is again, is the Coach of the Year, second year in a row, probably the 87th million time. I'm sure at some point she's, it's going to be out there, I don't know if she, you like the local Coach of the Year, but she's our Coach of the Year no matter what. We had, so I'll let you introduce the players that are here and your captains and all the other stuff because it's your show.
I think I just have two players here tonight. We've got a lot of basketball players and I believe a lot of DECA kids as well, but I have one of my captains, Jackie Chaplin, who's here. And we're very fortunate that not only does Haley Hamilton excel on the cross field, but also on the soccer field. Three other captains, Libby Collins, Claire Nistel and Cara Rocha, who are either DECA or studying or basketball. So thank everybody all around town for all of the support. Amazing experience, maybe even better, but the support that you received, so thank you.
All right. I know that was a lot to go over in a short amount of time, a short amount, we're just trying to get to it because I know we have a lot to do, but it really means a lot to us that you invited us up here. Again, we think it's important, not that we're all about individuals and state championships and league championships, but we want to recognize things like sportmanship awards and for the kids that are here, I think, you know, like again, just to reiterate, the fact that they represent their teams and the fact that, you know, they're here, but they're here on behalf of them, so we're very, very grateful, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Craig, I want to say to you and more importantly to all the athletes who are here and all the athletes who are not, thank you for the opportunity for us to get to hear a little bit about the season and to see some of the athletes in person. It, it's really special and it means a lot and I appreciate all of you for coming this evening and being willing to come out and give us the opportunity to honor you in person. It means a lot. Thank you. Thank you very much. Does, oh, look, I think I've got other members that want to say things.
I just want to just say thank you, but also if you guys want to leave, you can go now.
We are very, very interesting, but we understand.
Nice to exit, exit loud.
Thank you. How did you know? How'd you know they wanted to go? Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up, proceeding with the regular order, next would be the consent agenda. I know I have some things that I'm going to hold from the consent agenda and so I'm going to let you know and then maybe if other people have things they want to hold. So I'm going to hold, I would like to hold the Institution for Savings Donation, the Minutes from November 14th, I'm sorry, the Minutes from November 4th and the Minutes from November 18th. Do I have any other holds on the consent agenda?
I'd like to hold the field trips.
I hear you're wanting to hold the field trip?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. And when you talk, you're going to need to get closer to the mic for me. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Jen, can we have a motion on the rest of the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written, except for the holds previously mentioned.
Second. Second by Anna Siedzik. All those in favor? Okay. And that is unanimous of the six members who are present. I'm going to go ahead and just do the holds in the order that they're presented on the agenda. So I held the Institution for Savings Donation because I know I, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood what this was. I know I asked Eric and maybe some of you did as well. My understanding, Eric, is that this is a donation that was not really a donation to the schools, it's actually a donation to the toys, is it the toy drive?
Yep.
But it flowed through the schools and so it will show up on our budget and that's why it is here. I don't know if, I just want to make sure that people understood that or if people had other questions about it.
Check just happened to be written out to the school department.
Okay. All right. Looks like we're ready for motion to vote on that.
I move that we approve the Institution for Savings Donation in the amount of $1,500.
Second.
Second by Michelle Bailey. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And it is, the motion passes, it's unanimous of the six members present. The November 4th Minutes I held and you heard me make, allude to it at the beginning of the meeting, the comment, the concern I have has made me aware that I have not been asking members of the public to spell their name when they make a comment and it is really important that people who take the time to make a public comment be properly, you know, when you choose to make a public comment, you're doing it publicly and you want to be recognized in the, properly in the minutes. And so that is on me, that I noticed that in the Minutes, on page two of the Minutes, there is an error in a name. The name is listed as Willis Gutter, but my belief is that is, it is Willa Scudder.
Spell that?
Last name Scudder, S-C-U-T-T-E-R. No?
I think it's D's.
Oh, I'm sorry, DD. You're correct. Correct. DD. S-C-U-D-D-E-R. I was looking down at my wrong paper. And in that following paragraph, it refers to Mrs. Gutter, but it should be referring to Mrs. Scudder. And then on page seven, our new attorney, Mark Terry, under School Committee Attorney, is spelled M-A-R-C. So that is just a describer's error. Does anyone else have any other questions or concerns regarding these Minutes? Motion, or do we feel like we have the describer's errors?
Do you want me to just give me the November 18th errors and we'll put both of them under the same motion?
Sure. Absolutely. That's a great idea. Okay. All right. Did I ask already anybody else to have anything on the November 4th? No. Okay. On November 18th, it's really a very similar thing on page two, very top, Ella Schenker is spelled, last name is spelled S-C-H-E-N-K-E-R. And that's it?
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else on the November 18th Minutes? Okay. Go ahead, Jen.
I move that we accept the Minutes from November 4th and November 18th, 2021, with the changes suggested.
Second.
Second by Michelle Bailey. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All right. And the motion passes, it's unanimous of the members, six members who are present. Next, I think we had the ski club field trip, which was held by Michelle Bailey. Michelle?
So originally, when I saw night, I thought it was an overnight, but it's not. It's that they're going to go up and ski at night and come home at night. But they're going to be traveling on a bus for a significant amount of time, wearing a mask, and I would suggest that we make it a requirement that if you're going to attend an event such as this, that you would be vaccinated. And I have checked around and that is being done in several other communities in Massachusetts.
Okay. So I guess my question is, you're, are you wanting, are you offering a reason why you would like to, I guess what I'm asking is, are you asking to amend this or are you, are you just discussing why you're choosing not to vote for it? Is that?
I am suggesting that the school committee recommend that out-of-state field trips require vaccination. And that would be also the case of overnight field trips. So I would, I would suggest that we not vote on this and we put together a policy on what we do for those, but I don't recall if one of the dates is before our next meeting.
I think the first date is in January.
1/9.
Right. So it's immediately after. Yeah.
So I think if, I don't even, I don't even know if someone can get fully vaccinated if they're not vaccinated between now and then anyway, so that point is mute, but.
Okay.
I do think when you're putting people on a bus together for a couple of hours, whether the, whether there's, you know, central air, masking or not, there should be an expectation that I shouldn't have to put my child at risk because someone else's child is not vaccinated and it's not, it's an extracurricular, it's not a curricular event.
Excuse me, would you limit it to out-of-state or also in-state? Because potentially they could go from here to Springfield.
Yeah.
Which is to our, so it would include in-state as well as out-of-state?
Yeah. I would say for extracurricular field trips, if there were to be a school field trip for whatever reason, those usually happen during the day, during the school day, so you're not traveling so far, so maybe it would be something to do with the amount of time traveled or maybe, you know, and the kids are going on coaches, so the windows aren't going to be open if, because, you know, they have their own sort of like airplane air circulating system, but on school buses during the day, the windows are all open, so it's a little different situation, so it's mostly because of the extracurricular nature of it.
Okay. Anna?
Would you also want to require a negative COVID test, even if you were vaccinated?
So I don't think that's necessary for a day trip like these, but I was mentioning to Superintendent Tracy that some schools have done that for like nature's classroom where it's a week long and so there's quite a bit of risk of putting kids in a situation where they're sleeping in the same, you know, sort of area and stuff. So, you know, if we had something like that, we could talk about it, but that's not what we have here. And originally when I, when I read night, I meant, thought it meant overnight, but now I would say, you know, for this particular situation, not necessary.
I just ask because I know that a lot of other groups that are doing longer trips and thinking about. I'm thinking about scouts in particular, that is vaccination and negative tests. But the logistics of that might be difficult, so.
Yeah, Jen?
Can we incorporate this into our mask policy, since we haven't approved it?
Can you tell me what you mean?
Well, we have, right, the 80% threshold, when we're going to allow the high school and middle school to no longer wear masks. Can we just add a paragraph in that policy addressing field trips?
I see, you're talking about the, yeah.
Asking?
I think, and Michelle, I just want to make sure I know what Michelle was asking for. I think what Michelle was asking for was two things. One, her, her input is to vote no on this, or your, and then.
Or to table it.
Or to table it, and then to create a separate policy. I think the ma, if I'm hearing you correctly, the mask, the unmasking procedures, is that what you're talking about? I don't, that's actually not going to be a policy, that's really going to be procedures, that the operational procedures, so.
But isn't this also a procedure?
Well, and then we could also, we could approve it tonight, condition on that all, whatever, people going, are on the list that we already know who is and who is not vaccinated. It would be like, when you play a sport, you know, you have to have a physical. Okay, if you're going to go on this over, if you're going to go on this longer trip that's extracurricular, you need to have this information.
Anna, and then I'm going to ask Superintendent a couple of questions, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I think it's important to note that this is still referring to the old policy, which is still in effect, because the newly updated filter policy is still in form. But I think, I think that we might be able to fulfill what Jen is talking about and what Michelle is talking about, because under the approval documentation step, point, point two says, "A description of the process that will be used to determine student eligibility." So from a policy perspective, I feel like the process to determine student eligibility could very easily include, in order to be eligible, all students must have proof of vaccination. So I actually think the existing policy provides a pathway to incorporate that in without having to add it to the mask policy or refer to the inform policy. If we simply follow point number two, therefore, we could approve this, subject to vaccination requirement being part of point two, description of the process to determine eligibility. That's on page two, if anyone's wondering what I'm talking about.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, so I have a concern about trying to create this evening where we, you know, to create an, what Michelle is discussing is absolutely something that is happening at other districts. It is, we've certainly all read about that. And I'm a little hesitant to create a policy this evening, having not had it on the agenda. I think it's an important conversation, but I'm a little hesitant to do that. I'm going to ask the superintendent, what are, what's your input regarding this specific field trip and the conversation regarding vaccines? Does that?
Like, one of the, one of the pretenses we're operating under now is, I guess I would use athletics as an example, extracurricular activity, no requirement for vaccination. They have protocols, they follow all the same protocols on buses, and if they're in the yellow buses, the windows are open, all those same types of protocols are in action. But I just worry that we're going to create something for one thing, and not, like, like today, DECA went out, there was no requirement for vaccination, so just probably tread lightly on that. It's either all or none, I think that's the thing we need to decide.
Thank you, I, I think that's kind of what I was trying to say, is that I think if, if we do go down the, this, and again, it is certainly something that is happening, it is not, you know, not a completely new idea, and it would be important to create a really thoughtful policy that, you know, not just for this one event, I guess, that's my concern.
So it's not about the event, it's about the time. DECA went to Danvers, right? So that wasn't any further than they might have been on the bus to go to school, really, from some of their kids' house by the time the bus makes the route. But, you know, to me, it's about the time. You know, and the viral load, we know, happens over time, and these kids will be on the bus for a significant amount of time.
And it would be a different kind of a bus, right?
Coach bus.
Yeah, I mean, the bus could be better situation. I don't know what the ventilation is on a coach. I know that I like riding on a coach better than I like riding on a school bus. I know that. So, but I don't want to prevent these kids from going, but I do think that they should be a requirement that they're vaccinated. And, and if we make that requirement now, they might be able to go to on the second trip. If we wait until January 6th, they're going to be out, because, you know, if they haven't had one shot, it's going to take a while.
So, I, I guess, I mean, maybe I'll ask you to make a motion, maybe we really need to just take a vote, because I, you know, not a hundred, we could, we could vote up or down.
Can I say something? Yeah, Julia. I agree with what you're saying, but I don't, I don't, I think we need to, we do need to make a policy around it. I don't, I don't want to penalize these kids because they don't, like, I don't want to make a ruling right now, and then have it be something that they didn't know that they had to do, and then have them be penalized from going on the trip, I guess, I don't know. I just, but I completely 100% agree with what you're saying, Michelle. So I'm just not so sure about making a policy that's going to be kind of retroactive to this.
And I was, thank you for that, and I, and I know this is difficult. I, it's part of the reason, I mean, that I'm sort of wondering what the motion is, because, I feel like, I hope I've expressed pretty clearly that I, I think a policy needs to be, I think, I think this is sort of what Eric was saying, like, I, I feel like if we were going to create a vaccination policy for extracurriculars, we should create a vaccination policy for extracurriculars, not a policy just for something that, I understand you're not saying just for the field trip, but I.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, if you have one.
I move that we approve the field trips for this ski club, I guess it's called, for the upcoming months, and that we require that students on these trips are vaccinated, students and chaperones are vaccinated. Second.
Okay, that was seconded by Anna Seidzik. All right, we'll entertain discussion on that. Michelle Horgan?
Eric, how would this be managed? The nursing, I mean, the nursing staff.
Have to go through the nurses.
But they're already tapped out trying to keep the kids in school, correct?
Yeah, we could still, we could still, so if you revert back to what Dr. Carr was talking about, the policy, the procedure, if you will, we could create the same procedure that we would use in the 80%, where we would say you need to turn in a form and, and a copy of your card, and then that allows us to make a compliance list without violating, well, without nurses violating HIPAA.
Thank you.
Anna?
I think, I just want to affirm, I think from a policy perspective, especially knowing what the, the new policy looks like, there is a little bit of, I don't want to say variability, but every field trip has certain criteria that might vary from time to time. And I think that it's okay for us to recognize that, I mean, I, I, so this is my opinion, I think personally, from a policy perspective, because of that bullet point number two, that says there's a process to determine student eligibility, and that will vary from trip to trip, activity to activity. And I think, I think Michelle has raised a point that this is a unique activity that's a little bit different. So I think I disagree with the superintendent respectfully, that it's okay for us to have sort of a different policy depending on the activity. And I actually would argue that the pro, the provision of point two here supports that. We don't have a blanket policy around all extracurricular trips. The policy here, and also the new one that we approved in form last year, talks about, instead of getting didactic with every single trip is going to have this, 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 it simply says there will be criteria set forth to determine who is eligible. And then the minutia is borne out trip by trip. So I'm okay with that policy, I don't feel like we're making policy, I think we're following policy.
Jen?
Just so you know, we're looking at three to three and a half hours on a bus.
Okay, thank you. Julia, did you have extra, other comments? Okay, so, yep.
Sorry. Just so you're aware, Kevin Zano and I had a conversation about this, only because there's a bigger trip coming up in our near future that we'll discuss, but she has no issue. Either way, whatever the committee decides, she would, she would follow. So if there was an expectation for vaccination, she would put that out there, it's not holding her up, so.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All right, so understanding that, just for clarification, that a yes vote would indicate that we would approve this field trip request in an amended form, saying that students needed to, and, and chaperones needed to provide.
Wait, can we, can we repeat the motion, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so, not word for word, but the gist of it is that we will approve these field trips with the requirement that participants and chaperones are vaccinated.
Okay.
So that we allow it to happen with that one contingency.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Or whatever, Anna, what did you call those? Eligibility, that eligibility.
All right, are we ready? All right, all those in favor? And those opposed? And the motion passes, five to one of the members present. Okay. Next. Yes, we did the whole consent agenda, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, next, new business, we are going to hear about the 2022-2023 course catalog. I believe Brian Menegony is going to present.
Brian's going to come up and present for us.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me here tonight. I believe that you've had a copy of the proposed program studies for this school year. What we tried to do was make it pretty clear what the changes were by putting in what, so this stood out. And I also provided you some of those changes were in the end of the program studies through the end. Just so you know, the curriculum leaders are responsible for making changes to their particular departments. And then Dr. Laisro, who is the director of counseling, who's chair of the front part of the program studies, or just a general lack of policies. So because we've had time to maybe look through program studies and generate some of your own thoughts and questions about it, we just will bring it up with that.
Thank you. And I would like to say, Brian, I think this was really clearly presented, and it really allowed, it allowed an ease to figure out what had been changed, and, you know, it was, it was easy to get through, I felt like. All right, let's open it up to questions. Let's start with just really specific clarifying questions, things that you're uncertain about. Start with that. Michelle Bailey?
So it seems to me that in the health and wellness, you talk about each class, for this class, for this, by meaning graduating class, is there a reason for that? Is there like different requirements for different classes?
Well, I guess a clarifying question, are you asking about the specific courses and their descriptions?
I'm talking about their descriptions in the health and wellness. And it's like for each category, it says for the class of 2022, for the class of 2023. Is that because there's different requirements for those classes, or?
I mean, everybody has to take a physical education course each school year.
Right.
What I would say is that, you know, and I don't know if I'm answering the question correctly, so I apologize, but ninth graders, for example, take Adventure Leadership Education 1, that's their required course. 10th grade students take the health and wellness course, that's their required course. Juniors and seniors are able to choose from the elected courses that are there as their required physical education course. So maybe that is getting at your question perhaps.
That's not how I read what it said, go ahead.
Can I ask, are you talking, are you referring to the bottom of page 67 and the top?
Probably, it's way down there.
Yeah, so I think it's at the bottom of the pa, at page 67 and the top of page 68. And I, I guess, and forgive me if I get it wrong, Michelle, but I think maybe your question is, have the requirements in the wellness department changed, so that that is why the class of 2025 is listed sep, like each class, class of 2023, 24, 25 are listed separately with different requirements? Are you asking whether the requirements have changed?
Specifically, that is exactly what I'm asking.
Yes, I think that's what I was referring to. The reason why, for example, where it says class of 2025, that's crossed out. Instead, it says the class of 2026, that's because they'll be the ninth grader next year, and they'll take Adventure Leadership Education 1. So the year graduation just changes next to each course.
So there's, there are reason not to put ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, so you don't have to change that every year?
I would do that, I would just follow the convention that was there, that's all.
That just seemed like a good idea.
Right, I think, so I think that, that, I think that was a clarifying question, is that if, it, it, that, it's not that, that, it's not that like some change, some requirement has changed, and now the people that are in the class of 2024 are different somehow, it's just that these, these represent just change year after year, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade.
Yes.
Seems that would be better, that way you don't have to edit it every year.
All right.
When was the last time somebody got a global competency certificate?
I would say it's probably been, been happened last year or the year before. So the class of 2019, I believe, rewarded one.
A single one?
Same, yes, that year, correct. It's a lot of, it's a lot of actual work for a student to do that, it's a pretty significant number of steps that they have to take, in addition to doing the community service abroad coursework here. There's a lot of reflective work that has to be done, so it's, it's a pretty significant accomplishment. As such, it hasn't happened since 2019. You've always had somebody here every year get that until COVID started. And I think it really is kind of blocked, you can do it, have traveled certainly, but it's just been more difficult to do this community service work even in the country here, so a lot of the reamblesides that we did is as we start choosing courses for next year, because that's really when they have to start thinking about global competency certificate as part of the whole planning for the next school year.
I don't know the answer to this, is it true that if you take an honors course, you get an additional whatever point or something in your GPA?
Yes. Correct, there was a, there is a, I think, point three, like, yeah, point three.
Point three, okay.
I guess advantage in terms of GPA. You get an A in an honors class, that's a 4.3, whereas the college prep class is a 4.0. That's really the college prep class that sets the scale, and then honors or A+ is a 4.3.
So is there a chance that you might offer Mandarin honors level at the early, the younger grades? Because I didn't see honors listed for nine and 10.
Yeah, so it's, right now, it's for next year, that it's not in the works. It has been moved into Mandarin V, Mandarin IV, just not yet for freshman sophomore year.
Is it, as you know, when you're getting down to calculating the GPA for who the valedictorian is going to be, it can come down to the difference between whether or not they were able to take an honors foreign language class. And so kids who are taking Mandarin are at a disadvantage of becoming the valedictorian or salutatorian.
Perhaps, perhaps, but that's one class out of 28 that they may take, or two classes out of 28 that they may take.
Yeah, but I think, you know, when you come down to the end, it can be the difference of one tenth or of a point. And that could be the difference, is that one class.
Perhaps.
All right, Anna?
Just to, as a reminder to you, I have a clarifying question or two, and then I have some comments, so I'm just.
have some comments, so I'm just asking.
So start with, let's get everyone, let's do the clarifying question.
Thank you. Mr. Menegony, why do AP history, why does AP US history and its related courses, why do they not count toward the required social studies classes, whereas all the other APs, AP English, AP Spanish do appear as though they count towards the requirement? Maybe I'm misreading the chart, but I see two stars next to AP US history, which would indicate that it's not, it says these are elective courses and do not fulfill any part of the three-year history of social studies. So does that say if a student takes AP US history as instead of US history in the world that they, that wouldn't count for them?
Correct. That's because the AP US history curriculum, which comes from the College Board, is not aligned with Massachusetts history frameworks.
Is that the only AP class that's like that?
That class in particular is, I think, just because of the way that the history frameworks are laid out, whereas AP English, I think there's perhaps more flexibility within that, so it's better aligned to Massachusetts history frameworks.
So if a student wanted to take AP US history, they would be having to take it in addition to our US history in the world?
Yeah, typically, the kids take AP US history as seniors, and historically, only seniors took it. It's just in the past couple of years that we've started opening it to juniors.
Which I think is more consistent with the rest of the country. Usually, US history is a junior year requirement.
Depends on how they structure their history courses. We happen to have a two-year US and world history cover. I think that's, that's done to, I think, better look at how the United States history has been integrated with some of the happenings around the world. It may make us not so much to focus all at once, but rather to look more globally at how history works.
So this, this, I guess anomaly is the word that comes to mind. This is not unique to Hamilton-Lenham. This is true of every high school in Massachusetts. No one can count AP US history as a graduation requirement? It's always an elective?
It could be, perhaps, but you know, the way it is worked here, the way our curriculum is written, and again, I would say that the AP US history course does not align with the state frameworks.
Has that ever been raised as an issue with the state? That seems, I'm just saying objectively, as someone who's taken a lot of AP classes, it's odd that we have a state framework that doesn't align to a pretty core AP class.
So I mean, that's, you know, it's up to the College Board, what they're looking for in the syllabus, what will pass on, and they have to approve that. And ultimately, we have to keep an eye on here, are we attending to what the state expects us to teach?
OK. Thank you. Jen?
If that's the case, do students take the US and world history at the same time as they take AP? So they're essentially taking two social studies courses at the same time?
We do have a couple of kids who are doing that. We also have a couple of kids who are, more than a couple of kids, who are taking more than one year-long science class. So, you know, that, that kind of stuff does happen. You know, the conversation that I try to have with the students is, you know, you've got to remember when you're taking double the amount of a year-long class, you're missing a chance to take two electives. So that's something that they have to do, really a lot of thought and a lot of care. It's going to really change what their school year looks like in terms of workload, but also, you know, how much they're devoting in terms of one, one subject area. It happens maybe a little more frequently in math, historically, where kids may have tried to develop in math classes and it's like, you know, it's a lot of math, you really like it, that's great, but again, you are going to sacrifice a couple of other things, maybe having some flexibility is still.
Hey. I'm sorry, Eric, did you have something?
If I could help clarify something. In the, in the frameworks itself, on the actual, actually on quite a ways through 118 pages in, it actually says, "High schools may include other electives such as advanced placement or IB courses or locally developed courses in world religion, sociology, psychology, international issues, constitutional law, human rights, and areas of studies of specific regions or countries." So social studies departments following the curriculum frameworks as they're laid out for Massachusetts. And as you may know, they've changed several times in the past six years or so, and poor Kristen Borges and her team continues to rewrite and write.
So just for clarity, that is saying that those, they can, certainly districts can create those, but they don't necessarily fulfill the requirement? They don't?
Frameworks considers AP an elective.
Correct. OK.
It considers it to be what?
An elective. Right. In the same way that you could create your own, you know, your local course, courses. Julia? Will the program of studies be part of the equity audit, the DEI audit?
Yes, I gave them program of studies from, I believe, not this year, because it's not approved yet, but last year, all the way back through, I think, maybe 2017, 2018. So they will be looking at that.
All right. I'm just going to make sure, Michelle Horgan, did you have any questions?
Also.
All right, before we go around again, so if people have, well, we can go around again, Michelle.
So I am curious as to where sex education happens in the high school curriculum, because I'm aware of where it happens in the middle school, but not so much beyond that.
Grade nine is where it focuses at the beginning of the school year. I believe it was beginning of October this year, when we sent out the required letter to the ninth grade families just to make them aware of the sex education program, but also their opportunity to opt out. So chose to do so.
But that's it? It doesn't happen in 10th, 11th, or 12th grade?
They will, they will talk about some topics related to sex education, but I think that, you know, maybe what we think of a traditional meaning really is done in ninth grade, certainly because, you know, kids get older, things get more complex, and they will be discussing those, I think, more complex issues, especially, you know, as the social dimension gets more and more complicated for kids and just more choices for them to make. That would get the focus as they move towards their senior year.
And so where would they learn that? In yoga and Pilates class or?
So what happens is, you know, a kid may, as a junior, maybe take the yoga Pilates for their required course or semester, but there will be class periods built in throughout the semester where the health education component is taught. It's the same thing in ninth grade even, because they're doing Adventure Leadership Education, which means throughout the project adventure course, but still in that semester, they schedule time in the health classroom to learn about the health topics for that particular grade level.
I guess I would like the opportunity to see those at some point, yeah. What those lessons are.
Related to sex education.
Yeah.
Did you just want, perhaps, what the topics are that they?
No, I think I'd like to see what's being taught.
OK.
Okay. Do other people? Anna?
So I have two sort of serious concerns, one of which is related to what Michelle was talking about, which I voiced last year. And I don't get to use the word, this word often in public speaking, so I have to say I am agog that we continue to push abstinence plus. The line in particular that just really throws me is this line that says, quote, "To protect the needs and values of our students, the curriculum will be abstinence plus based." And not only, I mean, I raised this concern last year, abstinence plus is, is an outdated, puritanical, judgmental approach to sex ed. And I looked it up today. The Senate passed in September by a vote of 38 to one, a comprehensive sex education bill. It's Senate Bill 2541. It's set to go into effect if it's ratified by the House. I see no reason to expect why it wouldn't. And it requires medically accurate comprehensive sex education in the state of Massachusetts. So I feel like this is coming at us whether we want it to or not, but I'm, I'm really troubled that we as a district are not taking a proactive step to teach comprehensive sex education. And this is why I voted no on the course catalog last year, and I have no intention of changing my vote. I'm really bothered by that. The other thing that I'm troubled by that is not so much a hard no, but the other bill that's worked its way through, through the House and the Senate was signed into law earlier this month, and that's S2557, which is the genocide education law. And nowhere in our course catalog does the word genocide actually appear. I actually did a keyword search for it. So I'm curious to know where exactly are we going to put genocide education in? The only course where the words human rights appear is in facing ourselves in the world, but as much discussed, that is an elective and not a requirement. So how are we going to comply with a new state law on genocide education?
Well, I'll start with the question about abstinence based sex education. Again, that's language that's been in the program studies for quite a while. So what I did was I looked at the state frameworks for health and disability education. And it's, first of all, they're from 1999, so they're, they're perhaps equal to work. But when you look at how they partition the kids out, they talk about by the end of grade eight and by the end of grade 12, like those are sort of the two bands that we can kind of look at for high school. Because we're, you know, in particular here, we're talking about ninth grade students who really are closer to grade eight than they are to grade 12. So when I looked at the language with respect to sex education and where kids should be by the end of grade eight, you know, they, it talks about that students will be able to explain the benefits of abstinence, postponing sexual behavior, assisting or offsetting limits on sexual behavior. So that's how they describe what by the end of grade eight, kids should be able to do. By the end of grade 12, it says students should be able to describe the effectiveness and consequences of various pregnancy, HIV and STI prevention methods, including abstinence. So these very old state frameworks are still using the word abstinence. You know, and so with grade eight, they kind of led with that. By the end of grade 12, that was at the end. So, you know, maybe, and I understand your concern around how updated, you know, abstinence plus is, but I think the fact that it's in grade nine, given the developmental stage that grade nine students are at, I still want to stress that, you know, that approach. I do know that the teacher, having worked with these teachers for a number of years now, what's actually happening in the classroom, yes, they do discuss how abstinence, you know, is sort of, you know, it's the fail-safe method. However, there are other methods, contraception, although they're all discussed at length. So.
But, but I.
That's why I would explain it. I'm not saying whether or not I agree with it, I was trying to understand how the state frameworks fit the language that you can see in the program studies.
So I mean, that, I, and I agree with you, the frameworks are perhaps part of the problem, but I know that other districts have taken steps to include comprehensive sex ed. It's not as though we're hands are tied by the state frameworks. I know that Worcester, for example, recently adopted comprehensive sex ed, you know, before the state law has been passed. So I can appreciate that we're following them, but frankly, I expect us to do better than that. And I think, you know, all of this is fine and well and good, but comprehensive sex ed as it relates to DEI, there are numerous studies that support, districts that have comprehensive sex ed have lower incidence rates around consent and abuse and acceptance of LGBTQ relationships is all valid, healthy displays of sexuality. So I kind of feel like this, to me, feels really, really outdated. And I understand that things are in motion, but I think we have an obligation to our students present day, not the students of 1999. I don't really care about the students of 1999. I care about the students. I care about the students today. And students today, this is completely outdated for them. And I feel like we need to serve them, particularly if we look at sex ed through a DEI lens. So I understand everything you're saying. I'm not angry with you, but I feel like this is really wrong for our district and, and I think the state agrees, which is why this law is making its way so very quickly through the legislature. So, thank you.
Jen? Jen, did you have something to say?
I agree with everything Anna says.
Can you speak in the mic? I'm just having.
Can I get that in writing from my other?
Yes, absolutely. Not teaching comprehensive sex education in the ninth grade and putting it off till the 12th grade means you have 14, 15, 16, and potentially 17-year-olds who aren't getting the full picture. So they're making adult decisions without the educational background to make what we would hope would be the correct decision or the informed decision. I just, I think more knowledge is never a bad thing. And I would rather have them learning about it in ninth grade than waiting and through the internet and whatever else they can come across, because at least if they learn it early, they're, we know they're learning it correctly.
OK.
Yeah, I wouldn't, you know, say that what is currently being done in a concentrated classroom isn't comprehensive sex education. I just think that, first of all, language in program studies, maybe that needs to be visited. But what they're doing with the kids is providing them with information that is more aligned with comprehensive sex education, which does include abstinence as an option, obviously, we all recognize that. But I think, given the developmental age and stage of the grade nine students, perhaps is emphasized at the forefront a little bit more than it would be for a course description for a 12th grade students perhaps.
I, I, I'm just going to, I was going to say, I, it sounds to me like Michelle Bailey at the beginning asked for sort of what the curriculum actually looks like. And it sounds like that might be useful information because it might, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but it might be that, that, that some of this is, is, that the wording in the course catalog doesn't necessarily give us the full picture of the comprehensiveness or not of the actual coursework. Does that?
Correct. And I can tell you right now what the topics are that are covered in the grade nine, or the course.
I don't think our concern is around grade nine. I think our concern is that it's only a grade nine.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I don't, OK.
Yeah. I, I.
I don't thi, I agree wholeheartedly with what you stated, that abstinence should be what is taught to an eighth grader and possibly even a ninth grader. But I think that the relationship thing, the things that Anna talked about, about, you know, abuse and how to negotiate, you know, those situations, is more of a 10th, 11th, 12th grade developmental area. So if, if we have comprehensive sex education, it should be happening developmentally progressing towards adulthood by the time they're in seniors.
Maybe if I read through the topics that are in grade nine, that would help right now, I think, just to maybe make everybody a little bit more ease. So the topics covered in terms of sex ed for grade nine, abstinence, sexual diversity and gender identification, male female reproductive systems, STIs, contraception, finding support, developing healthy relationship skills, sexual assault and violence, and sexually explicit images. So that, that's grade nine. What, you know, what that looks like for a grade nine student will look obviously very differently than the discussions you have with a 12th grade student. They will touch on some of those topics in grades, well, probably not all of them, since they hopefully learn both the male and female reproductive system by then. I don't think it's changed a whole lot, but certainly they're going to be revisiting some of those topics that are developmentally appropriate, and that helps a little bit in these bands. What's, what's in the course catalog? This is, I guess, probably a more detailed description of what actually happens in the classroom, in terms of the topics that they study.
I think what Dana said is that we, we're not in the class, so it would help us to see those materials so that we can understand what's being taught.
This, I have a question for Brian and possibly for the superintendent. This is the 2022-2023 course catalog. So, and maybe it's actually for also Michelle and Michelle, who? So, and maybe it's actually for also Michelle, and Michelle, who've been here in the years past. When do we need to approve this in order to get this?
I guess I could sort of look at it in terms of the scheduling process for next year. So once this is approved, it allows us to go back in and make a lot of the formatting changes that we need to maybe clean it up so that way it can be presented to parents and students for next year, which we, you know, this is a nice project to do over the break, also early in January. That way it can be given to families like in January as we start looking at courses more in the fall here. So holding on approval just, you know, really could hold up a little bit in terms of how we're going to relay information to families.
And so this is typically, maybe that's Michelle. Michelle, maybe you know from the past, I don't remember last year, was a blur, whether this is typically approved in December.
I think it was January last year.
Yeah, I feel like it was later last year, but you know, last year was last year.
Last year, my, I've accepted, I've accepted my one year of experience was not a typical year.
I don't remember 1921.
Honestly, there's been a superintendent here that didn't have us approve those things, so.
Okay, so I guess, Jen?
Would it be worthwhile to change the description then on page 69 to match what we're actually teaching?
Well, what we are teaching is abstinence plus, aren't we?
I mean, it's, it, I guess that's a term that was placed in that course description a few years ago. If I could go back to the, I don't need to do that. I don't know that calling it abstinence plus again is, is accurate in terms of what they actually do in the classroom of those grade nine students. Now, what I, what I read to you were the topics that they cover. I guess the discussion with her would be, you know, whether does that meet the standard of what abstinence plus really is. I think we're, you know, the more accurate statement might be abstinence first as opposed to abstinence plus. I don't know if it's in the form of this.
I think that would be a worse categorization.
Yeah, I don't think that made it any better. Is there any way that what she's, what she, what we're teaching would fall under the umbrella of comprehensive sex ed?
In my mind, it would. It sounds like we're kind of teaching everything that you could possibly want to get in grade nine to know about that topic. And we're certainly not excluding them or providing them with all of the evidence-based information that we thought, you know, that we could. So I could talk with her about that. She's much more of an expert in terms of what comprehensive sex education is than I am, so we want to have that discussion with her before we put that in there.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Just a quick glance through the maps, nine through 12. I mean, we really do cover comprehensive health because it starts with the baseline, if you will, in ninth grade and then starts to get, gain complexity as you go through each of the years. So when you're starting to talk about sexuality in ninth grade, now you're in 10th grade talking about, okay, how does alcohol become an issue with, you know, issues of sex or issues of violence or issues of relationships? So they start to connect things together all the way up into senior where they're talking about environmental factors and physical factors. It just, it continues to grow through the years. And just like I said, quickly glancing through the maps that are here and the standards that are here. There seems to be a connection all the way through nine through 12 for health.
All right. Can I say, can I just say something? Just really quick, there's a question, just one question.
Please, go ahead.
So I, I mean, what I think I'm hearing is that it has a very unfortunate name of abstinence plus, but it's not, it's not what we would maybe think of as promoting abstinence as the only-
Right.
-answer.
And that came out earlier-
Is that accurate?
With Dr. Carr, November 5th meeting, he asked the same question and had sent the map out. It's not the only thing. It is clearly not. When you look at our map, it covers all the things that Brian listed out and then some. And it seems to grow. I mean, it's very basic in eighth grade, ninth grade, a little more expansive, and all the way through 12th grade where you're seeing much more complexity in, in the things that they're studying, including relationships, substances and relationships, problem solving, socioeconomic issues related, you know, all, they're, it just seems to grow in complexity from ninth grade all the way through to 12th grade in our, in our written curriculum. And abstinence plus is probably trying to take it out of there realistically where we're teaching as much as we can, even aligned with standards. When you're looking at the, just the mass standards, our teachers use both the math, mass standards and the national standards to build from. So it's even more dynamic relationship between the two standards.
So if it's just, seems to be a, a name issue, what we're calling it, who would make that decision to change the?
We would, we would, with any curriculum change, we would trust our teachers to build the curriculum and then, you know, how we, how we write the, the descriptions, as Brian, some Brian can break back to that and say, okay, we need to, we need to update these to what we're actually doing. That would be the easiest thing to do, that makes the most sense.
So at this point, I'm just gonna say I do want to trust the wisdom of the committee. And, you know, we need to make a decision this evening about whether we want to vote to approve this catalog or whether we want to, you know, table this until some changes are made. We need to, but we do need to move forward. We have a long agenda and I do want to make sure. And I am willing to trust the wisdom of this group of people as to what we feel is the best or step forward. So at this point, I would take a motion, if anyone has one, as to what active step we would like to take.
Someone wants to, you know, answer the other question that I'm just wanting to go in.
Just clarifying, it's, it's, we're adopting, not approving, yes. I'm sorry, Brian.
Another question, specifically genocide, correct? And the bill that was recently passed. So, you know, the, the bill has just recently been passed. And, you know, part of what is called for in the bill, in addition to the explicit teaching of genocide at some point in high school.
And middle school.
Yeah, and middle school. It calls for the creation of a fund. And that fund is going to help, help with the development of curriculum activities and professional development specifically around genocide. So what we would be, you know, looking for, I guess, in the coming months is, you know, what sort of money is going to be applied to this? What programs are going to be developed to help us push our curriculum along a little bit? I did ask Kristen Borges, who is our curriculum leader, for history and social studies, where we would see genocide taught right now in the current existing curriculum. And for two required courses, 10th grade and 11th grade. In 10th grade, US, US and World History I, they talk specifically about the Indian Indian rule and Morgan's rules and the US government response to that. In 11th grade, which is US and World History II, when they get to the World War II unit, they are talking about the rise of totalitarianism, they reunite and pre-COVID, they did a grade-wide study on Schindler's List. So we may look at bringing that back because the culminating event to that was bringing all the juniors into the audience to watch Schindler's List. So we set that for, for the COVID-related reasons, but we're going to bring it. It was a, I think, a good program. For our electives-
Can I ask a clarified question? Is the framework of the Holocaust taught only through the use of Schindler's List as a film?
No. I think that's, that's the culminating, one of the culminating activities for it, but there certainly is a lot more about the Holocaust than just watching a movie. In terms of the electives that we have, AP US History, again, you can talk about the 19th century Indian rule, also referring to the Armenian genocide as well. And then the Facing History class, which really focuses a lot on human rights and genocide. They can talk about the 10 stages of genocide, Armenia, Raphael Lincoln's definition of genocide, Holocaust, Cambodia, and Rwanda. So they go into that class, it's been a semester-long dive related to that whole subject. So, you know, currently we are learning about genocide in high school, so that way we can, you know, understand, you know, the impact that that's had throughout history. But we're looking forward to, you know, what can be offered to the students in terms of how we can expand our definition of genocide, see other examples of it. But really, I think more importantly, what that bill is pushing for is to start integrating more human rights discussion in history courses. But you don't have to wait, I think, until someone that program from the state comes out.
So it sounds like, it sounds like our current curriculum addresses a lot of what the bill is requiring, which is good. I'm wondering, again, if we're looking at revisit, you know, revisiting the course catalog, if we could include some of that specificity? Because it is sort of troubling to me that the word genocide is not in there. And some of the great things you just talked about are great examples of curriculum that we're already doing. So I think that's a change. I also had mentioned this to Superintendent Tracy a long time ago. The trust fund, to me, is really interesting, especially since we have newly created municipal human rights commissions. And, you know, as most people know, disclosure, I'm the president of the Human Rights Coalition. So I think the opportunity to get funding is really interesting, but I also think it's important for the public to know this will be required of us regardless of whether or not we get funding. So I'm happy to hear that, I think, curriculum-wise, we're a little bit closer to the mark on this than that. I also was trying to interrupt to say, just in terms of vernacular, abstinence plus is not like a term we made up. It's a very specific curriculum that has a universally understood meaning. So it's, it's not something that Hamilton Wenham is saying like, we're doing this, you know, it's, it's a techni-, it's a, it's a proprietary term. So if we're using it and it's not accurate, then we should change what we're saying. Because it's sort of like saying we drink, you know, Coke when in reality we drink lots of different sodas. We said we drink Coke. I hope that makes sense to people.
Yep. So as I sort of said, I would trust the wisdom of the committee. I would look to those of you that have, I mean, in other words, we are looking to adopt this. I, we could have a motion for that. There could be, I don't know, is there, it doesn't sound to me, it, forgive me if I'm not hearing right, but it didn't sound to me that there was any specific course that people felt needed to be removed. It was more questions around the specifics, descriptions, correct? I'm just clarifying whether that's accurate.
No, I would say I'm prepared to make a motion and see how it goes.
This is literally just an issue with formatting. A lot of, well, at least two of the sections on requirements go from one to three instead of one to two, when they're listed, so that could just be fixed.
Yeah, it could just be a specific example.
If you look under the requirements for social studies, it goes from one to three.
Give them the page number.
What page do you want?
It's page 38.
No, it says two.
Where? It's from one to three.
I don't see that, I see two.
I have two.
I don't have that.
You're looking at it as a word, no, you're looking at it as a video. The two is in the sentence.
Oh, that might be me then, sorry.
Did you see the two? There's a wrong one.
Yeah, I, it's not, there's no two there, but it's just, okay, there's no period. Sorry.
We found the two, hooray.
Okay, so that sounds like that was just a computer formatting issue.
It's a computer formatting issue.
All right, let's give it a shot because I do, we have a lot still to pursue and I want to make a decision here.
All right, I move we table adoption of the high school course of studies for 2022 to 2023 to receive additional information about specific curriculum and teaching around sex education in the district.
Second.
Seconded by Jen Carr. So my question to you, Brian, is, I asked already, this sounds like there will be challenging. I'm wondering if, knowing what you've heard this evening, there are still things that you can do over the break to move forward, knowing that it doesn't appear, you know, in terms of scheduling, it doesn't appear people are, I, I don't know, or do you feel like that you're, without having this adopted, you cannot move forward at all? I'm just trying to understand your timeline.
Yeah, I guess on the surface it would seem that a lot of this was good. Regardless of the decisions here, I just don't know for certain, you know, what maybe the pushback there may not be, varies. What could be seen as simple language changes, the one person might not be, but another, so.
Understood.
That's the part I don't know.
Is there further discussion? Okay, are we ready to vote? Did you want to say anything? Eric, no? Okay, so the motion would be to table this. Did you say specifically-
I said pending further, I have pending further information about the curriculum and specific course information taught around sex education in the district.
All right. All those in favor of tabling this? Okay, that is four in favor. Are all those opposed? That's two opposed and the motion passes. And so the course catalog adoption is tabled and we will, I anticipate that we will revisit it at our January 6th meeting, I hope. Oh, okay, or the 13th? We'll say, well, we anticipate putting it on a January meeting.
Because we're forcing it to do this over break?
Absolutely.
I don't want to do it.
No, no, I, I absolutely, that was not my intent at all. My intent was to get it done as quickly as possible, but not absolutely, we can, on a future agenda. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Craig is here to talk about, Craig Genualno is here to talk about the athletics budget presentation.
Is there, is there anyone that can plug my laptop in something there?
Plug right there.
Yes. I think it's right, I actually, yeah, it's like right, yeah.
It's, 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 it's.
Thank you, everybody. So I think this is an important night for athletics, not because we're talking about money, but just because we're talking about values and, you know, the things that we value and stuff. Again, about the subcommittee last night, completely appreciate the chance to share, the dialogue, the ability to, to get on the same page with what we're actually doing. There's a lot of high-level stuff that kind of gets floated around out there, but really being able to dig into that is super important. Incredibly grateful for your allow, my, you know, like discussion with you. So we're going to go through some things tonight. We're going to go through these slides pretty quick because they're, but they're all very important. We want to talk about some recent highlights. Last year, we had the ability to complete all four athletic seasons. Usually it's three, we had to divide up into four. Like everybody else in the world, we had adapted, dressed, and overcome. We were proud that all four of our seasons finished in person, the entire school year. All of our martial games were completed. We didn't have to postpone any seasons. We did have some teams pause last year, but at no point in no time for any team was there a spread within that team. So to me, it says that all the protocols were followed pretty well as best we could. Even in a, in a year that was, you know, crazy, we still had an unduplicated participation rate of 63%. What that means is 63% of our student athletes participate, excuse me, 63% of our students participated in at least one sport. We did so- participated in at least one sport. We did so while trying to keep the focus, not only on the field, but off the field, in the classroom, and how we comport ourselves with our peers. Between last year and this fall, we've had eight teams win college championship chips. Seems a lot. Five teams win sportsmanship awards, eight players of the year, six coaches of the year, many wish you met tonight. One of the things I didn't mention earlier, because I was hoping she could make it here, we actually had our first home hockey game of the year. It's like the third hockey game I've missed in seven years. And Trish Mayman, the assistant in the athletic office, was recently named Katie Bailey in District Five Assistant of the Year. That's approved of about 30 to 35 schools that she won that award from. She's actually helping me cover that game, so I can be here with her tonight. And I wanted to mention that as well. This fall, in the first statewide state tournament, every one of our teams qualified. We talked about that earlier. We talked about how far they advanced. And of course, we had the incredible run of the girls soccer team and how well they did. And again, it was above that team and those girls and that pressure. If for anyone that was at those games, it was packed, you know, whether it was home or home away from home, or on the road at Manning Field and then there was incredible support from everybody. And I thought it was wonderful that all the other teams came out and supported, and then the next day, the girls would be at their game. It was just a wonderful, wonderful few weeks. So a lot of success the last year, year and a half, even in some pretty tough circumstances. Last year, this particular slide was toward the end, and I felt like it was important to share and put it out front. Whether we like it or not, whether it's appropriate or not, whether it's, we can argue about it all day, athletics is the single most visible part of our school district. We host the most events. We host the biggest event on campus, school event on campus every two years. We're in the newspaper every day. And it affects more of our students, I think, than any other field. So 70% of high school students are normally able to participate in athletics. This year, if I had to guess, it's going to be closer to 75, which is the most since I've been here in 10 years. And if you think about that from a district perspective, these are 2019 numbers, but 22% of our district-wide students participate in athletics. I don't know how many students the elementary school has or whatever, but 22% of the entire district students is a significant amount of students. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to extend the school day for all that MIA is false. And I do support that. Their mission is on point. Their mission is educational athletics. This isn't club. This isn't AAU. This isn't anything like that. We're about educational athletics. Between 3:00 and 9:00 p.m. every day, we're trying to extend the school day to our students. We see our fields and our courts and our breaks as laboratories. It's the same as going to work in a Ken lab. We talk about all the things that a 21st century student wants: outcome-based learning, collaboration, accountability, resilience, creativity within structure. We feel like we're trying to extend the school day. And we're trying to do it the best we can on a bit of a shoe frame. One of the things this budget does not include, this is not a level service budget, what we're doing here is we're presenting you with options. Right now, our district funds user fees at 25%, and we keep the family cap. We are presenting options to you for 30, 35, 40%, and what that looks like. And our contention and what we're going to try to show you is, as you increase those steps every 5%, it's a cost of $29,000 to the district. And what we're trying to extend is the value of what we're providing our district through athletics is worth every penny of that and perhaps more. And you see that there. In a $43 million proposed budget, if you go up 5% from 25 to 30, it's $29,000, and it's .069% of the budget. And then .069% each 5% as you go up, $29,000, being the difference between these stuff. What's not included in this budget, I still contend that, or always contend that every varsity sport needs a paid assistant. If you're in an elementary school, this is really heavy, I don't know.
It's good.
I don't want to fix it. If you're out of the field, a lot of our sports take place off campus. If you're a varsity coach, along with 20 kids, and a kid drops, who takes care of the rest of the team while you're taking care of the kid? Who, if you're on a road trip and someone has to be transported to a hospital, who goes home with the team? Right? These are some of the questions, and not to mention the added coaching value or the added mentorship or all that other, the added adult connection. So I always contend that all of our CTEs need a paid assistant from the district. We don't have that yet. We need a new pole vault pit. It's 25 grand. We need track and field, excuse me, we need game bowls for soccer, field hockey. It's a lot of money that is not in this budget. We need to redo the gym floor. We need more weight training equipment. And there is, no, there is some money in our budget for outdoor facilities and managing that. There's no additional money for that. So those are just some of the things not in this year's budget. And I say this not, I'm not trying to be negative in any way. I'm just trying to say, we're not adding anything in this except for the user fees. It's a lot of stuff we need. We're trying to be reasonable with what we're asking. Brief history about user fees. Prior to 2012, it was 100% family-based. There was a scholarship fund. There was no family cap. Thank you. Yeah, it's loud. I filled that out. The district paid nothing towards fees. 2013 and 14, the district started paying 20% of the family cap, excuse me, 20% of the user fees. There was no family cap. 2015 to 17, we stayed at 20%. We included the family cap for the first time. 2018 to 19, the district jumped to a 60%, thank you, a 60% contribution to the fees, and we kept the family cap. Two years ago at this time, prior to COVID, that 60% was again approved. COVID came. We were concerned about losing chapter 70 money. It dropped to 25%. The 20, the amount never re-increased despite the fact that, I don't, maybe you're the speaker on the school, I don't think we lost the chapter 70 money. And so now, going in, so we're on the second year now of being back, oop, of being back at 25%. We did increase the scholarship a bit, which is great, that pays off. So that's a brief history of where our user fees are at. If we don't increase the user fees at all, the contribution to user fees, this is our numbers. We need 590, we need $595,000 to cover all sports at 25%. The district would pay 148. Admin, scholarship, family cap kind of stays the same. That's your number at 30. Again, we're going to go up above $29,000 per box here. And so you'll see the number of fees needed stays the same, admin costs stay the same, scholarship stays the same, family cap stays the same. But the district contribution goes up by just $29,000 for each of the columns. So that's your numbers between what we are at, 25, up to 40. What we have on this slide is what the estimated user fees are per sport. This is, this is an estimate. It's varied based on participation. We are combining genders here. For example, you'll no longer see girls and boys basketball. We started doing this this year, just in basketball. And what's interesting here, so if, if the fee structure stays the same, this is the number per sport at 40%. What we did do for you down here is a rough guess of if we combined everybody, it would be 525 or 40%. We did the same thing at 35, same thing at 30, the same thing at 25. And you see how the fees obviously per sport go up. Just going to take golf, for example. The higher the district fee, the lower the family that plays golf pays. And then these are your numbers down here in the turquoise. We have one universal number. Hamilton Wenham, if we go up to 30%, 1.15% of our budget will go toward athletics. 1.15% of our $43 million budget will go towards athletics. This is a value statement. We're saying how much we value athletics and all that good stuff, all the kids over here, all the coaches over here, all the joy it brings to the community, all the togetherness it brings to the community, all the 21st century learning stuff. If we go up to 30%, we're saying 1.15% of our budget goes toward athletics. We do the same numbers at 35, up to 1.22. And Hamilton Wenham at 40%, user fee contribution, we're at 1.29% of our budget. What does that mean? Our neighbors Ipswich in FY '21, 1.34% of their budget goes towards athletics. In Manchester Essendon, it's 1.47. We talk about this all the time. I know it's an uncomfortable topic. I know you hear about it. Certainly, I hear about it. We don't like to talk about it during the year as much because there's a million things going on. I think this is the point where we need to make a choice about our usage fees. So that's that. Happy to answer any questions or clarify any slides you saw.
Thank you. Just to clarify, were there, it looked like there were some minor differences from the original? Was that accurate? Am I looking at an old copy?
The data was the same. The pictures, I didn't represent enough sports. So I updated some pictures. When I did the copy that you had, the total district budget was lower than...
Got it.
That was the only...
So some of, so some of the percentages were slightly different?
Slightly, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
And that was only because I had a turn in?
Yeah, no, because, yeah, no, I appreciate that. Okay, so again, this, the goal of this is for the people here to really understand, to really get clear on exactly what you're presenting. So let's start with just clarifying questions. Anna?
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. The family cap, and I know we've talked about this before, but if we eliminated the family cap, am I correct in understanding that that $59,567 would flow back towards money available to the district contribution?
It would.
Okay.
So the downside of that is you have several, so it would, right? It totally would. And it's a valid question, right? Like, do we help out a lot of people a little? Or do we help out a few people a lot? That's a question we wrestle with in every topic we've ever...
I think you and I have had that specific conversation more than once.
And I don't, you know, ultimately, there's not, there's not one perfect, everything fits all given answer. What I would say is, if that family cap was eliminated, what I found last year, somewhat anecdotally, somewhat numbers-wise, was that if you took that away, there are certain sports in the spring where participation is more the goal than being elite or being, right? Traffic field, tennis, those numbers, those participation numbers would drop drastically. And so what would happen is if you had, if that sport, if people paid for that sport where they already paid, they probably wouldn't play in because they're not there as, as like, this is what I, this is how I, no one should define themselves as an athlete. Some students, right, like, I'm a soccer player, I'm a basketball player. They wouldn't participate in those sports necessarily because that's not their fundamental thing. So one of the two things would happen, either the cost of those specific sports would skyrocket, making the people that are kind of in the middle less likely to pay because now tennis, which was, I'm making this up, I don't have the slide in front of me, but say it was...
466.
Yeah. Now that might go up to 600. And so someone who's in the, so now you're losing the student athlete to do it socially. And you may lose some of those middle of the rope, you're like, I don't know if that's the value I'm looking for.
Do you think that if we increased the district contribution to 40% for everyone, so that if we eliminated the family cap but went up to 40%, then those families who otherwise might have been benefiting from the cap, they would benefit from the 40% allocation? You would, you know, split the difference a little bit? Do you think that would ameliorate some of that participation drop-off in the spring?
I think if you increase it all the way to 40, but drop the family cap, I think, I think that's right where the line is of, like, too much this way, I know it's going to happen too much this way. That's probably right around where the line is that it would be, it'd be interesting to see what happens, if that makes sense.
And then my only other clarifying question, we've talked about, I've talked about this a lot with you. When you say average, that would be under the scenario where everyone pays the same fee, regardless of the sport. So some, you know, some sports are going to get a significant decrease. Other sports might see a little bit of an increase. But that would be the scenario by which everyone pays the same fee for suiting up for the generals regardless of your sport?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so you know, your screen is not showing the...
Did I do that or did someone else do that?
That's you.
That's you.
I like your spreadsheet, though. It's very nice.
Thank you.
Okay.
So yeah, so you're exactly right here. This is, you were actually, about a third of the sports would be, would benefit greatly. About two-thirds would go off like on...
And if three of them would be about the same.
Correct.
Okay. Michelle Horgan?
So if we do a 40%, you're looking at $85 to $100 decrease per family, let's say. If I look at your, let's look at volleyball, right? So if you have an athlete that, a student that does three sports, only child in the family, they would get the third sport fee free, right? Let me fall, let's see if I can get this out here without confusing the whole world. So for two sports, they'd save themselves $200, but then they'd have to pay $400 for the third sport, where if the family cap, if you didn't have the 40% and you kept the family cap, you would still be up.
Right. So you would pay a little, so if you are a three-sport family, you'd be paying... Correct. So just take volleyball at 40%. Well, no, like, you know, it's better to take the average because of the ball, right? So if you played three sports times 525, so it's 1575. If you played two at 35%, you'd be at 1350, but then you'd get the other one free. So you would, what is that? So you'd have to spend a little bit more, you've got $150, $175 more total to play the third sport, to take away the family cap.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. So in a, in a perfect world, keeping the family cap and 40% district pay would be in my ideal.
Yeah. That would be approximately 89, $90,000 increase to the district, above if we funded 25%.
And that's including keeping the cap?
And that includes keeping the cap. And again, that's a 1.29 funding level.
Which is still well below Ipswich and Manchester.
Michelle Bailey?
So I think discussing this too much with Craig is wasting time because Vinnie's budget has an increase in it for tonight, which is new. And that is the number that, you know, the district feels that they can support. So, which, was it 30 or 35? I don't remember.
35.
So 35. So discussing this 5% to me isn't like a good use of our time right now.
Thank you for that, Michelle, because I agree. I think our goal with Craig is to really, just really understand the, what you're presenting to us and, and sort of the discussion and debate can come later, but so that it's essential for us to understand it, but we don't necessarily need to debate it right in this moment. Are there other clarifying questions or things that you feel like can get answered about this presentation? Okay. Thank you very much. That was, oh, I'm sorry. Jen?
So if I'm reading this correct, if we eliminated the family cap and went from 35%, which is in Vinnie's budget, to 40%, we would actually decrease the amount we're paying because the family cap is 60, but the 5% increase is, what, 29.7? So it would actually decrease our budget, not increase our budget.
If you were to remove the family cap entirely, yes. If you were to remove it and reallocate it to the percentage match, no, it's one for one. But if you're removing it completely, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for earlier.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Next up, we have our IT budget presentation.
Alan Topier.
Alan is going to present for us. Thank you.
So while Alan gets set up, I'm just going to point out to you that the IT budget changed so much from the budget we've been talking about to the budget I'm about to update you on tonight, that we asked Alan to do his presentation...
that we asked Alan to do his presentation based on the updated numbers that I'm going to tell you after their presentations, just so you have the most accurate information because his did, his does have a lot of changes in it.
Okay.
So is the exhibit accurate anymore?
The exhibit one that's linked to my section is what he's presenting on tonight. If you're trying to compare his presentation now to our prior two meetings, they do not match. But it does match my exhibit one, I believe. Or it's exhibit two. Let me check.
Well, thank you very much. Happy, um, happy to be here and talk to you in the big house again, so. Can't see if you're on call. All right, so IT budget. Just a little background, Andrew Slapp, this year, last year, is something I've been, I kind of see IT department as what we do with our user experience, the center of it. And I think that we provide services around the user, the user experience. So it's like risk management, it's around security, preservation of business continuity, data integrity, identity confidentiality, network mitigation for protecting our children. In the information side, there is making available quality data that, and knowledge tools that can be leveraged for, from, with collaboration. And usability, current technology that can be accessed with easily, easily transferable skills. So, this kind of doesn't talk, we talk about technology as much, but it's mostly about me trying to center how I think about what we do as a technology department. So the coming year, our budget has some changes in it. We've been really busy this year, a lot of different initiatives, a lot of rollouts, rolling out ninth grade, eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade devices, rolling out new laptops to the teachers. We're kind of rolling, pulling stuff back in from being partially remote and or floating remote and, and trying to re-level, rebalance ourselves in that those changes keep in place. It's been an effort and it's been continually busy. So, but in hardware, we have a big change coming up and the costs are going up significantly. But this is mostly around the seventh grade iPad initiative, where we're now paying for the seventh graders to have new iPads every year. These iPads that they'll keep for the rest of their, their, their time as a student. There's also Chromebook refresh at the middle school. The Chromebooks we have there are quite old. Not quite old, but they're, they're growing old. And we're playing, we're planning to buy 120 new ones to utilize with sixth graders next year. We have, again, next, this coming year will be our life cycle replacement of our high school teachers' laptops, there's about 55 of them. And then we'll also have replacing the carts of the iPads at the elementary school, which is 90 iPads there. Professional development, which is what keeps our staff up to date. There's no change there. Contracted services, which are Xerox, uh, our, it's our, our print management services, our contracts with our ISPs, our contracts with our external services around security, around firewalls, around other internet services, we can think DNS, a archiving, a number of things that are staying the same. We also have, our software changing. So our software is going down a little bit, but there's been a lot of changes from, again, being remote. We haven't bought a lot of software or at least engaging in licensing and services around edgenuity and let's see, advanced, another one, outside for our kids who are floating remote. We also engage a lot, a lot more purchasing websites and software that comes through websites that we're, we're using externally. And so that was, those things are not being purchased again next year. We also are reducing our costs around Zoom. It's not going away, but we're reducing our costs around it. And, but those are kind of being offset with some other things we've learned this year. And that was that we need to do a better job with our communications. So we're engaging in some software that enhances our website, multi-language, bilingual translation on our website, messaging from a website. There'll also be additional software purchases around our student information system to help our parents manage the emergency cards and information we get informed. We have, we have them filled out every year as part of enrollment process. So there's a little balance in there. We pull back some stuff and we also engage in some new initiatives. The changes are remote services, we're reducing our costs around remote, remote services and fees. And that's the accelerated education and edgenuity Zoom. We're reducing, those also include the educational software subscriptions. We're increasing, there's one thing that we're increasing, our cyber security. We've been working on a number of, what I would call business continuity services, making sure that we have backups and ability to recover from a disaster, and planning on having a disaster. And then the the security platform or our footprint that we engaged in for previously several years seems to have not, in my mind, has not met, no longer meets our needs. So although we're keeping all this stuff, the little pieces, we're actually adding another layer to that, and that's what we call network characteristics. Allows us to not only understand what's happening on our computers, but also understand what kind of traffic is actually happening around our computer, around activities. And we will flag that if we say, that's not right, or that is, that we want to let go, let her go. We really can't look forward into the future without having this type of vision to what's happening in our, our network. I think we've done a very good job at this point, but it's, we can't sit on our laurels. We have to keep moving. So there's an increase of about $17,000 around this aspect of our, our network security. My last, I answered, read this, and then the last piece is, that's our increase in the, the devices for the seventh grade iPads. We're also going to have an increase around beginning a multi-year initiative around replacing our access points. We have one here in the ceiling. That one came out of a box about 10 years ago. I, I like to tell people, it's a favorite story, that when I arrived, there were boxes laying around the server room. I opened them up, there's all these brand-new access points in there that they, apparently the head fund had granted us. And there's no plan to actually put in place, so we got them up and running. And since then, we've gone from those 50 access points to 170 or so that we use now. But that technology does not, nor meets our needs and will not keep up with our needs over the next 10 years. So thinking about how I think about networks, I think you've been seven to 10-year phases in saying, what do we need to go get over the next, you know, seven to 10 years? And we can't do that with what we have in place here. So we're going to be investigating and interviewing and trying to find the right solution to get us into, you know, the next generation, generation of high-performance, high-density wireless access points. I think that we've gone from our classrooms where we have our handing out kids' iPads and and laptops, you know, third-hand classroom, where now every kid has at least three devices on them and the density for that device up there in the ceiling is really about 35 to 40, but I haven't, in a classroom, nine devices sometimes. So there's not enough room in that, that device to actually handle the amount of traffic that can be generated in busy times. We push more than 15 terabytes of, of data across our firewall every month. It's like, you, the stack tires and paper gets halfway through the moon, you know, it's like a lot of information. And I think that's, that's, that's good, right? We've been growing into this. We've had a lot of success in our classrooms with our wireless and one-on-one initiatives. And it makes, it makes sense to keep supporting that. Well, that's pretty much all I have to say to the whole thing. So, as, as, as Vinnie said, there's been some changes as we develop and refine that piece, so that not, that what you have right now is exactly what I put on the screen. Do you have questions I could help with?
Sure. Let's, can you back up one slide just so that we have that to look at? Thank you. That's going to help me. Okay, questions? Jen?
I have two questions. Since the seventh graders are getting their iPads at that point in time, and I assume they'll follow them into the high school, we're not planning on collecting those back when they graduate because they'll essentially be obsolete, correct?
I think we have, we're obligated to either give a dollar back for them or something. But they have no real value at that point.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I, I don't think, in my mind, we have this objection there. I'll just get over to you.
Want water?
Yeah. Your can go. I think you have a really great point. And we have been observing and talking about what the student's devices should be and how the student develops their own
Sorry, do you mind speaking to the mic so issue of you can get it?
How the student's device develops their own learning. I don't know, if it's like their own learning style, right, with the devices. So, I, I've been in classrooms watching the teacher give an assignment out, you know, to do in the classroom. And kids pick up different devices, they can tackle the same, the same, the same project you will assign and, and do by using a stylus, by typing, by taking photos, by drawing on paper. And I think that, that we don't want to stifle that, right? So we find that by the time the kids are, are our students, and we're lucky about this, but by the time the students are here, they've migrated to their own learning style around a visual device. And that often involves them moving from the iPad, the personal iPad, to another personal device like a laptop. So we're going to have, we're going to have some, some stress when the kids' devices get to be that old. And we'll have to deal with that as we come across them on that time. It's going to be, it's going to be interesting to see how it works out. But there's no plan to replace that right now as they get to their
Yeah, so that charge for seventh grade iPads, it's basically going to be recurring?
Every year, we have to buy 120 to 100 plus, 120, 125 new iPads every year.
And my second question is, with the large website revamp that you were discussing, we're going to make sure that's ADA compliant, correct?
Yeah, that's part of the There's been some, the, the, the website can be ADA compliant. We have to work in an ADA compliant way too. So we have to engage it appropriately.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Oh, Michelle?
Yeah, so, when we talk about equipment replacement and things like that, are we talking, where do we see the smart board replacement in there?
We haven't developed a smart board replacement plan yet. We're just beginning, the infancy of, of starting to identify what that would look like. I was sat in a meeting yesterday, we started talking about it, our, started the survey and started to gauge what that should look like. So, the, every room in the district has some kind of audiovisual system in it. So there's 147 or so of those. And they mostly all engage some kind of projector like this and a, a smart board. This is not a smart board. This is just a, a production backboard. And those smart boards, I think I've only bought one of those the 10 years I've been here. And so we need to look at that carefully and think about what that's going to look like. If we start replacing them next, the next budget cycle, is that going to be a three or four-year program? Is that going to, how long will that last? Another 10-year cycle of those, those, those will be vulnerable. But at this time right now, to walk into the classroom and just replace exactly what we have there is about $5,000 or $6,000. So I'm anticipating we're going to have to look at that carefully because it adds up. And it can't be just done one time. There'll be something to learn to go.
So there is no, there's no, nothing in there for replacement at this point?
Oh, there is a replacement for, in the hardware, we have small land that I put in for broken projectors, light bulbs, foot bulbs. Any repairs may happen. Right now, we're having, we're replacing some speakers because the speakers that come with those are 15 years old and wearing out.
But you're working on a lifecycle replacement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be interested to see where it goes, and next year, we'll bring us some kind of activity.
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have facilities, maintenance, and operation budget presentation. And Tom Geary is going to present.
Two very tough jobs. I'm ready to go.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you for your patience. Again, presenting the facilities and maintenance budget for FY '23. To start off quickly, for those who haven't seen the past facts in prior years, we maintain six schools, well, six buildings across 93 acres, which covers 365,000 gross interior square feet. And we do that with a snapping level of 16.25. Excuse me. So first, I'd like to start off and explain to you how '21, '22's funding has been spent to date. First, our facility has been fully occupied since the first day of school. And that was a theme, I know, across the elementary, middle, upper case school, like, presentations. And I couldn't be any more excited to walk through and see our facility is occupied. That's the magic of it. It's me excited to walk through our buildings and the difference between working for a public school district and working in any other area of facilities management. So what our budget allows us to do this year is to perform those code requirements, those safety inspections that are mandated by law and also best practice to keep our occupants safe. So everything from boiler systems to like safety playgrounds, we have these inspections covered in the budget this year. Something this year that was very exciting to do was moving most of our contracted services to Massachusetts State Contract vendors under the Operational Services Division. They basically put out public bids and allowed us to take advantage of economies of scale. Like, being a small school district, we're able to take advantage of statewide discounts on contractors, which is also helpful because I'm not sure if anybody on the committee has tried to secure a contractor for their house. It's very challenging. However, built-in to these state contracts are required response times, which is very helpful. That's not to say that we can always get the parts needed, but at least, you know, we, we have a leg up when it comes to getting qualified contractors. Excuse me. Something that we, we transitioned to this year was, I would say, estimated 90% utilization of the FAC 85 contract through OSD. That is a really That is a really in-depth detailed contract where we're able to order our consumables or custodial supplies, anything from ice melt, paper towels, cleaning chemicals. And the contract is such a gold standard that the state of New York, the state of Connecticut, the state of Vermont uses as well. You have to, all vendors have to go through a third-party certification process for their products, whether it be Green Seal or EPA stamps, that not only provide us safe chemicals and safe products for our occupants, but also, you know, reducing, I guess, the world's carbon footprint at the same time. So, all around, it's a good contract. Most of the items are the same price as normal products, if not cheaper. So, that's been really a no-brainer and happy to celebrate that. Another thing in this contract, we were able to, I guess, maintain our playing fields to a higher standard using targeted cultivation and fertilization. I put an asterisk there because we started off really good. I was doing my touchdown dance, the fields were looking really good. However, with the success of our team going later on into the season, it's just not sustainable for us to maintain the natural grass fields with the amount of use that we have on our field, which is why we're investigating, making major investment into our athletic fields. So, the FY '23, the budget allows us to, the first point is pending action with the funds that have been discussed using E and D, and that is, we would use those funds to improve the safety functionality, lifestyle, and aesthetics of our living environments. My first inclination with this money is to target many deferred maintenance projects at the middle school, high school. With some of the uncertainty going on with the elementary schools, I feel it's a safe investment to make smaller project investments at the middle of high school. Everything from asbestos flooring removal to restroom partitions to upgrades to some of the science lab equipment. We've had some issues with gas lines. So, some of those initial thoughts, to dedicate those money to deferred maintenance projects that are smaller, they're not necessarily capital investments, but they're still wanting to do this. The budget also allows us to basically keep the doors open for business as we're operating today, you know, by continuing to use these OSD contracts and continuing to use the cleaning products at the staffing levels we have. It's no secret to anybody on the committee or to the community that our infrastructure across the district is aging. Middle school even being our newest, a lot of the major PTC devices are coming upon the end of their useful life. That doesn't mean that they can just go to stop and shut down, just means that we have to be mindful of what we put in the budget for repairs. Athletic facility upgrades desperately needed, as I alluded to before, no matter how hard, you know, or how much money you put into the natural turf fields, we simply do not have enough athletic space to properly maintain things. And the custodial and maintenance staffing levels continue to be an unmet need. As you recall, during the reductions, during the FY '20 budget process, two of our maintenance technicians were reduced, thus creating a bit of a burden. And our custodial staffing levels is very difficult to find. Substitute custodians, only time there's an absence, it's definitely a difficult process. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Facilities and operations.
Thank you. All right, questions? Oh, Jen?
So, I love the fact that we're fully occupied, but if we get another huge kindergarten class and we're already fully occupied, do we have a plan to deal with that? Because if we're fully occupied and we add an additional.
I'm sorry, so, when I, fully occupied in my slide presentation means that we opened up school much different than we did in last fall.
Okay, so, not all, it doesn't mean all the classrooms are fully occupied.
That's not to say that we're not in a space crunch, and I think that we have to look at, I'll defer to Superintendent Tracy, but I think there's going to be some in-depth conversations of where classrooms are located.
Please?
Yeah, the three principals, actually four principals at the elementary level have already had, started that discussion, trying to figure out where things would go. So, we do have an idea of what to do. We just have to, again, it's, we're tight everywhere, we're pretty tight all over, so it's really reallocating and trying to figure out best locations. It may, you know, kindergarten may jump from, say, the Bukeur over to the Winthrop or the Cotler, depending on how they restructure programs.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Michelle?
So, I cannot recall, there were some upgrades to make Bukeur specifically more ADA compliant, and is that, did that, or is that going to happen? Or is that in this budget?
You may be referring to the capital improvement list, another statement that was carried, that was, we were looking at targeting that as a project? If we had taken that and grew that seed bond this year on capital budget? Is that refreshing?
No, so I guess my question is, is so, this budget also doesn't meet the needs of making our schools ADA compliant?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. I think if the capital expenditure would be deep invested to make that happen.
Okay. And there had been a lot of talk about those, at the doors, making there be like an inter-room in order for security purposes, so this would, this also does not address those security needs?
That's correct. The physical security needs, you know, as far as the double airlock vestibule, without getting into too much detail on security in public.
Right.
That would have been carried, I guess, to the security upgrades.
Okay.
Without us pushing capital forward this year on one of those major projects, right? At the same time, we are seeking, you know, assistance from MSBA, where we have three project applications into the elementary schools. I know the board of directors met yesterday, I believe, at 12:15, they looked in their agenda packet, didn't appear that they took action on invitations to the program, so my understanding is, or guess, is that we will find out after March, board of directors meeting, maybe March 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Anna?
And thank you for all this. Just so I understand, the idea around the $325,000 capital allocation from the E and D, if we move forward, part of your motivation is focusing on the middle and high schools because we're hopeful that the MSBA will come through on the elementary level? Do you have, I suppose it's going to be after the budget timeline, but if, you know, we're not going to hear from the MSBA until March or April, it's going to be after this budget has run its course. So, is there any notion that if we're not put into that program, do we need to have some sort of contingency or idea to do some of the upgrades that Michelle has been talking about and other things? I mean, I completely support the high-level idea that we're not going to put money into a car that we're going to replace, you know, like, I get that, but at the same time, this is still, these are still the buildings we have with students in them still. So, is there a way that we can have it, so there's a plan in case it doesn't come through? And how do we build that into the budget, if at all?
So, the $325,000, I believe, would not address all of our accessibility issues or all of the disparities across all three elementary schools. So, you'll see over the years, like, in the coming months, state of schools report, Superintendent Tracy is formed your book, and we'll be publishing, you know, the current conditions of the schools. And then one of our goals is that long-range facilities planning, which you'll see, you know, we'll have more information from MSBA by the time that report is due with the management of the district here. So, you'll see some possibilities of how to live with the structures we have along making progress. It's a tough place to be, is, you know, waiting on assistance from MSBA.
Well, and we're, and we're in a similar spot with the high school roof. I mean, there's a few things that ideally we would address right away, but are a significant financial ask without state support. So, I feel like that, to me, is, you know, I wish that the district had addressed that, you know, 10 or 15 years ago, but we can't really lament that. But for me, looking at it now, I, I'm struggling with sort of saying, well, we're waiting on the state, we're waiting on the state. I mean, at a certain point, I want to say, well, we can't wait on the state any further, like, we have to figure out a different plan. So, I guess that's the bug I would put in your ears, you know, what is the, what does the plan look like if we didn't have that option? And I don't even know if that's a realistic ask, but my mind is thinking on it, because I think we do have to do something about the facilities as soon as we can.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Next, Vinnie, I believe, is going to get up and update us on the budget process. Nope, nope, I think, yep, we're here, go ahead.
So, tonight, we're going to update you on some changes to the budget, but just to backpedal for a second. On November 18th, we gave you the first peek on the superintendent's FY '23 initial budget recommendation. At that meeting, we showed you the changes to level service, which showed you any addition or changes due to the grants, and we also incorporated any new investments we had at the time. Two weeks later, at the December 2nd meeting, we layered in one-time use of expenses to offset E and D. On December 18th, we, on December 8th, sorry, we held our quintuplet board meeting, where we discussed both presentations prior to that. But simultaneously, during that whole roughly three-week period, Eric and I were meeting behind the scenes with department heads, with principals, and the leadership team. We conducted many of our one-on-one meetings. At the same time, we were waiting for the deadline for salary advancement and step advancement, and waiting for the deadline for retirement applications to come in. So, during that time, we didn't update the budget for you guys. We kept the same numbers to not confuse you, how to layer in the E and D and what effect it had on the budget. But now, we're going to update you on the changes to the budget and what this effect has had over time. You good to turn it on? So, now, I'm going to go through and break down each DESI category and what the changes were. Right here, we're looking at the difference between the budget we presented in December, uh, sorry, the budget we presented in November, which is located in this column, and then the budget we're going to talk about tonight, which is in this column. So, overall, the changes from the original budget we presented till now, we're showing an increase of approximately 2.1 FTEs, but at the same time, we're showing a reduction to the budget of approximately 482,000. So, now, I'm just going to go through each individual DESI account and highlight the major changes. It's not all the changes. In total, I think there was almost 105 accounts that changed between our original budget and now, I'm literally just highlighting the big ones. So, just to start in order, for the administration DAC, we're seeing an overall change from our first budget to today of approximately $17,000 and an increase of roughly 0.1 FTE. This is due to two major things. The first one is the increase of a 0.1 payroll position. So, originally, we asked for a 0.5 payroll position to be added. For many of you who know, each 0.2 equals one day of work. When you have a 0.5, you kind of come into a scheduling conflict, and as I discussed this with the business office, we were trying to figure out, you know, what their schedule would be, and then we looked back at the past, and we used to have a part-time position. It created a lot of conflict with staff members coming to the business office because they always had to coordinate what day were they actually here, and then if they were here that day, what time were they here? The 0.5 means you have some sort of part-time day. So, we're asking just to increase that by 0.1 to make them three even days per week, so we can tell people, they're here on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, during the fourth day, you don't have to now schedule a certain time to come. With that increase, brings approximately $5,100 increase to the administration DAC. In addition to that, you heard Alan talk about upgrading our security posture and putting in another layer of technology security. That costs roughly $11,500, so combined, we're looking at an increase to administration for $17,000. Again, this is just from the budget we showed you before to tonight, not the overall budget from FY '22 to '23. The next section is capital, operations, and maintenance. We're seeing a change from the November budget to the December budget of approximately $364,000. Obviously, the bulk of this is extraordinary maintenance. When I originally presented the budget to you, this was in a different DESI category. Our last presentation, I had mentioned that this might change, depending conversations I had with the auditors. It has changed, but you'll see an offsetting amount in the next slide, but here, we're seeing an increase of the $325,000 for extraordinary maintenance. In addition, is again, technology, infrastructure upgrades. With, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic, we've added a lot of devices into the network, and we need to upgrade our Wi-Fi across the district. This is estimated to cost approximately $35,000, but this is netted against a $5,000 reduction to the overall overtime related to the maintenance and custodial department, as well as the summertime student support. The next DESI category is the capital fixed assets improvements. This is the other side, it's $325,000. The next is guidance, counseling, and testing. We're seeing a change of roughly 1 FTE or roughly $105,000. This is not a new position. You'll see later on, in a different DESI category, the exact opposite of this. Since, I think about 2008, there was a rise program in the budget. It was categorized as a special ed classroom instructional teacher. They are not special ed, and they are not a classroom teacher. They are considered a counselor. This was brought up. This was brought up during Eric and I one-on-one meetings for the high schools. So to properly categorize that teacher, we are moving them into the guidance, counseling, and testing DAC. And again, you'll see the exact opposite in the teachers' DAC. So it's not a new position, but it is an increase to this DESI category. In addition to that, we're seeing an increase of around $5,000 in the guidance department. This is due to the enhancement of their Naviance platform as well as their X2 platform. Next is instructional materials. We're seeing an increase of approximately $78,000. Again, you heard Alan talk about it and I did mention in my last program, my last presentation, sorry, earlier in the year, Mary Beth did eliminate the paid iPad program at the high school and we initiated the seventh grade iPads at the middle school. You guys heard it again, and I'll just repeat it. This will be a reoccurring cost every year going forward. There won't be an additional $63,000, but this baseline of $63,000 will have to stay in the budget as long as this program exists. In addition to that, we're adding roughly $60,000 for our curriculum materials. This is related to the math common core and the Lexia materials across the elementary schools. This is being offset by a reduction in remote teaching software, just like Alan said. We're no longer running Ingenuity and we have reduced our consumption of Zoom. So we're lowering our software by approximately $32,000. Next is instructional leadership, where we're seeing a change from budget to budget of about 0.6 FTEs in addition, $39,000. Biggest contributor here is the additional ask at a 0.6 out-of-district chair to assist Stacey Musick, our Director of Student Services, in managing of our out-of-district students. Many of you were here two years ago. This position was cut as part of the COVID-19 reductions in the beginning of 2021. In addition to that, the North Shore Education Collaborative has told us that their membership is going up $6,000 for FY23. Some of this is being offset by the elimination of the curriculum coordinator stipends across the elementary schools. So with the addition of the instructional coaches at the three elementary schools, we don't need that stipend anymore. So we are eliminating it. There is one at each elementary school. In addition to that, we're offsetting it, offsetting it by a reduction in maintenance contracts. Now, this isn't a reduction year over year. If you remember when I originally built the budget that we presented, we had not had that one-on-one meeting with Alan and I set a baseline of a 7% increase on every month of the accounts. He didn't need an increase at all, so I withdrew the 7%, which equates to $7,000. So there's not a reduction in services. It's just a reduction of the placeholder I put in from the previous presentation. In addition to that, we're reducing it by approximately $10,000. There is a, there was, or there still is, a vacant position in the technology department. At the time, Alan was not finished with his structure. He has finished that. We posted the position and we had posted the salary board, which resulted in a $10,000 decrease to what we had in the budget. The next section is insurance, retirement, and other, where we're seeing an overall reduction of approximately $53,000. The first item here is the reduction in sick day buyback. When I originally presented the budget to you, all I did was roll over the budget from one year to the next without knowing actually how many retirees we have. We have that information now. There's three of them. Therefore, I removed roughly three additional retirements from that line, which resulted in savings of approximately $14,000. The next item is a reduction in our health insurance enrollment. So as I might have explained before, right now, for every vacant position in the budget, we've budgeted either a family plan for them or an individual plan. Since the creation or since the introduction of the first budget, two of those positions we hired for, they came in, filled out the paperwork, and they are not taking health insurance. So we have reduced that line item to reflect what has actually occurred over the past three weeks. The next one is other teaching services, where we're seeing a reduction of approximately $7,000. These are just two minor changes. One of them is the submission of a column advancement for a teacher that falls in this DESI category. And the other one is a reduction in our distant learning and online coursework. This again has to do with COVID-19. We upped that account this year and last year to cover additional online coursework that will not be carried through into FY23. The next section is professional development, where we're seeing a decrease of approximately $9,000. This has to do with the reduction in summer curriculum work. When I originally built the budget, I noticed that in FY21 and the beginning of FY22, we overspent our summer curriculum line. So I was anticipating that this was going to carry through from one budget year to the next. After Eric and I met with Jen, our Director of Teaching and Learning, elementary teaching and learning, we do not anticipate that carrying through to next year. So I have taken back that additional $12,000 I added in to cover the expenses that looked like were going to be reoccurring from the prior years. In addition to offset that, we are asking to increase all TAs in the district a half hour on one Wednesday every month to include them on early release Wednesdays to help provide professional development to them and pay them for that half hour.
Did you say a half hour?
Half hour, yes. There's already a half-
What are you going to do in half hour?
There's already a half hour built in. So in total, it'll be an hour. This year for '22, we had already built in a little bit. So in total, it's about an hour. The next one is pupil services, where we're seeing an increase of about $18,000. This is due to the athletic user fee. So just to level set on this one, in FY22, we currently have a 25% match on athletic user fees. When we originally presented our initial budget recommendation, we upped that by 5% for a total of a 30% match. We are now upping that an additional 5% for a total of 35%. You saw Craig's presentation earlier. He was hoping for anywhere between, you know, the 35 and 40. Right now, it's set at 40. I'm sorry, 35. We'll get back to 40 in a moment, but right now, it's set at 35. In addition to that, we're increasing this, the pupil services line for additional social and emotional support at the high school. And some of this is being offset by a reduction in our special ed transportation that also flows to this DESI category. The next item, and the biggest one, is teachers, where we're seeing an overall increase of approximately 0.4 FTEs while seeing a reduction of approximately $162,000. So to break this one down, I'm just going to start from the top instead of the positives, the column change placeholders. When I originally presented the budget to you on the 18th, again, it was still two weeks before the deadline was due. I incorporated every single column advancement I had at the time and incorporated an additional placeholder for future ones that I would get. I based my number on the past two-year average. The past two-year average included the new addition of M15 column, which upped that number. We saw a steady decrease this year in the actual number of people that applied. The theory behind that is most of them got it over the past two years and finally moved to that M15. So ultimately, we didn't use up the entire placeholder that I put in. So we're pulling that back and reducing this line item by approximately $123,000. The next item is that offset in the RISE teacher that you saw in the guidance, counseling, and testing DESI category. Again, the December 1st deadline has passed for retirements. Three of them were submitted and we're realizing a savings of approximately $25,000 per teacher retiring for an ultimate savings of $75,000. The next item is almost the complete reverse of that. We had a recent vacancy occur in the special ed department. The teacher that vacated that position was extremely low on the pay scale. We do not anticipate being able to get somebody that low next year. So we are actually asking to increase that line item for that individual because we do not feel we will be able to be lucky enough and fortunate enough to get someone that low. The next two items are addition, additional FTEs. The first one is a 1.0 middle school for a life's teacher. This kind of has two factors playing into it. The first one is we're trying to maintain sixth grade oral language that we've been discussing over the past year. This will help us accomplish that. In addition, one of those retirements is a department head in the oral language. They are currently a middle school teacher and they are currently teaching Spanish. But Eric and I played out a bunch of different scenarios depending on who takes their place, whether it's a high school teacher, whether it's a middle school teacher, whether it's a Mandarin teacher, or whether it's a Spanish teacher. It could leave a 0.4 vacancy in that department. So that 1.0 FTE will help us maintain the oral language throughout the high school and the middle school, depending on which scenario plays out. Did I explain that correctly? The next one is a 0.4 middle school math teacher. This is on top of the 0.2 math teacher that you've already seen built into the prior budget and the same 0.2 math position you guys voted in for this fiscal year. So overall, combining all these items, it's a 0.4 increase and roughly a $162,000 increase. For the last item is tuition. Through the hard work of the student services office, we are projecting a decrease in our out-of-district placement, I think probably for the first time in four years, I believe, of approximately $548,000, which obviously is what is helping cover a lot of additions you're seeing tonight. So what does this all mean when you wrap it all up? So we're combining all Level Service, all the addition to the grants, the new investments, the addition to the OEPED and the extraordinary maintenance. We're seeing an overall budget of approximately $43 million, a roughly $4.3 million increase. Just to remind you, that includes the additional $2.3 million for the offset to E and D for an overall gross increase of roughly 11%. This is it in DAC form and this is it in our DESI category. So I'll try to run through it because I know I've ran through this with you guys plenty of times. You can see that same number carries up to the top. We are seeing a little difference in our school choice enrollment from what I projected before. I rolled over the same number we had last year, which incorporated almost 100 school choice students. We're only at 77. So 77 times $5,000 per student is the $385,000 now. So even though I showed you before that we reduced our budget by approximately $480,000, the net assessment to the town is a reduction of, I believe, roughly $420,000. But the difference is the decrease in the revenue for school choice. So ultimately, it brings our gross operating budget after offsets to roughly just under $4 million. From there, you take away all of our revenue sources, just to point you out again, you have the E and D of approximately $3.1 million. The end result is an overall net budget increase of 2.6% now for four. I believe it was roughly 3.6, I think. So we're dropping it down roughly 1%. So what does that mean when you roll out the new assessment? The new shift for Hamilton Wenham is 65.24% Hamilton and 30 is 26% Wenham. It means an overall increase to Hamilton of roughly $675,000 or roughly 4%. But what it's doing to that is actually decreasing their, broke their net operating budget by approximately $170,000 or roughly a reduction of 0.1%. So that kind of does it for updating you on the budget. Now, I'm kind of asking for direction. You've seen what we presented. You've seen what Level Service was. You've seen our new investments and you've kind of seen what we want to do with E and D. There is still a question that was raised tonight about athletic user fees. This is kind of a moment to ask us whatever you want to ask us, even if it's questions about prior presentations, if it's questions about tonight, because the next time we meet is January 6th. At that meeting, we're supposed to vote into tentative budget. I would love to incorporate any changes you guys want into that budget for the 6th. Obviously, that's not the final budget. We won't be voting that until February. So there's still time to change it if there's, if there's no direction you have tonight, but it's kind of looking for how you like it, I guess.
Okay. So I know that Vinny, thank you very much for that, Vinny and Eric. I know that you said you want to talk about direction. I think just before, I think we've seen this several times, but so we may not, but if before we do direction, if anyone just had a question about something that has been changed tonight. Julia?
I just have a quick question about the reduction of the OOD placements. What led to it? Is it COVID or is it something that you think will be replicated in future years or is it just sort of an anomaly this year?
Through COVID, the Department of Education changed or gave an opportunity to kids who otherwise wouldn't admit competency determination so they wouldn't have passed that pass. Basically, kids who were in out-of-district placements, the number of kids in out-of-district placements were given the option by the department along, actually, any state to go back and say, you didn't pass your math, but you're in a school and you took algebra two and you passed it. The state swapped that out for the requirement for those kids. So we have a number of kids qualified for that change in competency determination, which basically graduated from school. In some cases, that was holding kids from getting the form or moving on to another program.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else with questions before we move on to sort of? Okay. All right, well, I guess I'll open it up to give feedback, direction. Anna?
So first of all, thank you. I think this is, I mean, I, high level, I like it. I am intrigued by everything that Craig had to say tonight. And, you know, I don't know how, unfortunately, he left because I know that he has such a good brain around this, but I, especially given how we compare fee-wise to other districts, I personally would be comfortable and open going to that 40% to doing a little bit more. But I am intrigued by eliminating the family cap because I feel like that's the 60,000 if we're going to increase our contribution. I like the idea of, of, I like the idea of doing things that help the most number of students. And I think that, I actually really liked the way Michelle kind of laid it out. You know, if you were an average family that played three sports and you looked at that average fee, what would the real delta be? So I personally, in terms of my direction, like I would, I would encourage us to go to the 40%, but eliminate the family cap. And I have always loved having one fee, average the fees out. And if there's any difference, instead of having these individualized booster clubs, encourage people to have a general's booster club where everyone pools resources like Friends of the Arts, like the Ed Fund, like other groups do to help offset that. But I, to me, the one spot I would tweak it is in the athletic department budget. And I would, I would, those would be the changes I would personally support. I don't know if anyone else likes any of those at all, but that would be my point of direction. The only other thing I really want is a DEI director, but I know that that might be something forthcoming, but I would love to see us, you know, make that a priority for the district. But I know the audit is still running and I think that, you know, that's my gut feeling on that is we could improve there, but I think it might be premature to put that into the budget before the audit itself is done. But I do, in my mind, I think that's something we need to keep making a priority in this district so that DEI initiatives are not a one and done. Like, this is the first year and I'd like to see that reflected in the budget year after year.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Michelle?
The capital plan. I know Tom talked about, you know,
I know Tom talked about, you know, the balance we have to do between MSBA and, and the schools. But, you know, we did, two years ago, we did have a 10-year plan. And I think there's a little, can you just explain, I think there's a little bit of a halt on that right now? A little bit, right? Or again, because of the MSBA or?
It's kind of a combination of multiple things. It's that MSBA is the lining up of our capital projects, town's capital projects. They're having a massive triangle, so we play the niche along with Eric's state of facilities. Kind of want to see all these things, see kind of what the future holds. Because we know we're going to have to have a $5 million high school root project next year. It might be wise not to issue a million dollar project now when you know that big one's coming in three or four years from now. So that's kind of the idea of not pushing capital forward right now. Trying to line up every month so we don't overwhelm cash pairs at once.
The secondary issue relates to nailing, nail down people to do the work. We still have a $958,000 that was approved in the last capital round to spend because we just can't get people to do the work and get material. And that's why we're still, I think, this, this under $600,000 and work still to be done. And the 10-year plan that you're, you're looking at, we referenced in the capital planning sub meeting. And you know, if you look at something like just the ADA requirement changes, you're looking at 2.6, 2.7 million dollars for the three elementary schools only. You know, so there's a lot of these kind of odd projects that are, that are a million dollars, $2 million that we're going to have to figure out. And it's one of the reasons we, Tom and I are trying to build the state of the school district because I think it's important to work with our communities, given the fact that we're looking at the possibility of building a new school, possibly an elementary school that could run in the 30, 40 million dollar range with a 47% reimbursement. There's a lot of money still crossed off with. A project for our fields that gets no reimbursement from the state that could write, this is my estimate, between 12, 15 million dollars by the time we get there. The root project at the high school is going to cost us another 3.5 plus million dollars, depending on how the scope of the project works out. And then on and on and on. So we're sitting on, we looked at that capital improvement planning grid of 10 years. I believe it was this year. We looked at it two years ago, I think it's like $26 million. And that's just in fix-ups, things that we need. The middle school already has that window replaced at family. After, you know, 10 years, their, their seals are breaking. Those stuff will run into the millions of dollars when you're looking at the entire building over time. So, you know, we, we have some fancy work to do, but also I think it's important for us to keep working with the communities, whole communities. We've met with both town managers, we've put kind of all the cards on the table and said that we're looking at $75 million over the next 10 years if we were to hit all the buttons the right way. That includes their project as well, like the town hall project is a $10 million project with, I think, three and a half, four million dollars coming out of the pockets of people. And then, I don't know about one of you yet, learning on any bigger projects they have, but I'm assuming they also have aspirations for bigger projects as well. So it is, it's, it's really, we're trying to get all the information out there. This, the state of the facilities report, the most genuine will lay it out for everybody. I don't think anybody's seen everything in one place at one time. If you go back 10 years, if you go in my office tonight, there are 10 years worth of studies that we paid for over time and never actually came to any fruition. So my, my hope is to change that, start to make something out of what we're putting our money into, you know, studies and checking and building and growing, to actually making something happen.
Okay, thank you. Jen?
My question is more edification. So are you just assuming that for school choice students that the number will be the same next year as it is this year? Or when do we get the final number for school choice for 2023?
What we receive this year is what we spend next year. So we're receiving $77,000 worth of kids, it's 5,000 per student, for 77 students. So what we get this year is exactly what goes in our budget next year.
Okay, thank you.
Julia?
Oh, I just wanted to say, just from all of my listening and all the presentations, I, I fully support this budget. I think it's, I think it's going in the right direction. I think it expresses our values and I also think it's palatable to the towns, which is hugely important. But I, I would absolutely support what Anna said with the 40% increase. And I'm, I know we talked at the capital finance meeting a little bit about more specifically how we might structure the fees and then present something to the committee. But I, I, I just wanted to lend my support to the budget and thank you for your, your hard work around it.
So ultimately, I'm going to work in what you guys want to work in. But I just want to remind you that next year, we have to backfill that 770K in E and D. So whatever we're adding in now is going to get amplified in the future. So just keep it in mind.
Michelle, did you have anything? No?
Oh, no.
Oh, no, okay.
I'm ready to vote on this bad boy. I think, I think this is a great budget as it is. I think it's palatable. I think it addresses, you know, a couple of needs, you know, and it's incrementally always trying to improve. And I think that's what this budget does. So yeah, I'm, I'm ready to vote on this and I'm ready to start telling people, come to town meeting, vote on it.
Thank you. I am also enthusiastic about the budget. I did have a, a question, which I guess is the flip side maybe about, of what Michelle was talking about, about the big capital project. I guess, I don't really know how exactly to ask this, but I'm thinking about the people that are going to be sitting in these seats 15 years from now. What, and, and this is to Michelle's point too, about what incremental things can we be, are we mindful of like, let's make sure, I mean, you asked the question about, a very specific question, Michelle, about the smart boards? Like, like, do we feel like in this budget, there's sufficient attention to just regular preventative maintenance so that we aren't deferring?
I have one word, OPEB.
Yeah, well, that's a great example of, I mean, and I've used that same example for the OPEB about serving the people that are going to be sitting here 10, 15, 20 years from now. So I guess I just want to make sure, because OPEB, I think, is a huge part of that. And I want to think about it in terms of, maybe the middle school is what you were talking about as sort of the wisest place, that that building is, whatever it is, 20, 22 years old or whatever. It, we don't want it to,
Fall the rack and ruin.
Fall apart before its time, right? In, in the way that we've heard that some other things, maybe it's not before their time, they're old. But anyway, it's just, that's just my only feedback is that I just want to make sure that we're continually mindful of things that are long in the distance. And I did hear, Eric, you mentioning the middle school specifically because I think that might be really a wise place to be thinking about. Because that building is certainly not looking to be replaced in the near future. So.
We're also mindful of kind of emergency projects as well. Like for instance, we had a massive gas pipe issue at the high school under the floor that would have been chopped out to find, to get the pipes that were identified by fire problems leaking. Tom and the plumber and the gas department came up with a better solution for us. We'll open up the ceiling and just reconnect everything. But that's, those things, we can, we can manage those things. It's just, when you're looking at the bigger structure of all the science labs, every one of those science labs that has gas and could have the same issue again and again, we fix one set. So we just, we just trying to balance that as well and to really be careful. I think Tom probably has the most difficult budget to manage in some ways because all of a sudden, pop, something goes and we have to try to figure out how to really beat this.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make the comment that the increase of that 2.6%, that's a third of what inflation is right now. So you guys really are doing more with less funds.
It is half of our five-year average.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with Michelle. I vote on it tonight and.
Can I ask a clarifying question about something you just said about the, the 700? No, but, and I, this has always been on my mind, you know, and we know this to be true, that 773,000, that's not the one-time exceptional use. That really is a, you know, an overage that next year we're not going to have. So when you say be mindful of what we do now will be, you used the word amplified in the future. Do you mean to say that we just need to be mindful that next year we're going to have to come up with $773,000 to keep level services for next year?
Yes. And if we add in as a new investment, which would be something like an additional match on athletic user fees, will make that issue worse next year.
Because we'll have to come up, so even though the relative delta, which I think Craig said was something like $29,000 per, you know, per 5% and then the, the family cap was 60 grand, right? So I mean, it's small dollars in the big scheme of things, but you're just saying every time we do that, we're going to have to come up with that money again somewhere. And we already know for a fact that we have to come up with $773,000 next year just to keep level services.
Yes.
So are you sort of forewarning that next year we're going to have to cut 773 out just to keep level service?
I'm forewarning that either next year or the year after is probably going to be the tough year. Depending on how this year ends, it could be next year or it might be the one.
So to play that out, if we do this lovely, well-intentioned idea of going to 40% and making it generous, et cetera, et cetera, two years from now, we might be in position where we have to go back to the days of 100% user fees and we offer nothing, just as hypothetical. Is that sort of, are those, are those the scenarios that you're talking about?
That's possible, yeah. I mean, it depends on what we decide to go after, to reduce. Could be, we could all say, no, we really think that's important, but we want to reduce someone else. It's going to hurt at some point because there's, because that, it was last meeting, Vinnie showed the effects of, of, you know, just moving that OPEB number 16 and a half percent in '24.
Right.
That increase would never be swallowed by either of the communities. So that's now all of a sudden, we're cutting back, cutting back, cutting back, cutting back into two, two or three like calls.
Okay. Thank you very much. Everybody else? Okay.
So maintain what it is.
Say that again?
It's a good amount, keep what it is, don't change athletics. I think that was the only question for the items.
And we're going to talk.
Okay, we can change it after, so.
Bring it back, whatever, is it two weeks or three weeks? The sixth, right?
It's the sixth.
Bring it back on the sixth. And we'll vote on it.
Yeah, I, yeah.
You're full of chocolate and chum.
Thank you.
To remind some.
And you guys?
So I do want to be aware of our policy that it is 10 o'clock. I do have a few more things I would like to do. So I'm going to make a motion, a move, that we allow the meeting to continue for up to, up until 10:30.
Second?
Second by Anna.
Michelle, actually.
Michelle. Second by Michelle. All those in favor? It's unanimous of the six members present and we'll continue until 10:30. Thank you. All right. Eric, do you want to give us the review of the face coverings and masks?
Truly. First, a little overview of the numbers. Hopefully, everybody's seen them. As you can tell, our numbers have skyrocketed in cases in both communities. And through a discussion today with the Hamilton Town Nurse, Rachel Lee, she actually even sent out an email to several of us that those numbers aren't accurate because there's quite a bit of non-reporting going on. Just because people are doing a home test and they say, oh, I have COVID and they're staying home. They're not necessarily going to a facility, being tested and being entered into the Maven system. So they feel like the, in, in Hamilton, anyway, she's speaking for Hamilton, that the cases are even higher than what they actually are pulling off of the Maven system. So right now, this is, this is where our cases are at. We had a big bump in the district. I did show a change in one of the numbers. I mistyped the number that was, that was entered in and it should have been an eight. So I updated that from a cup, from two weeks ago. And then this week, it doesn't even show on here. We had, for the first time ever, six pools come up with cases, which yielded 14 different cases across the district. And then we were running in the past two weeks, over 100 test and stays, which is putting a huge burden on our nursing staff. I mean, they, again, above, above and beyond. Monday morning, I came into this cafeteria and there were 40 chairs set up at six feet apart. And the nurses that were here were getting ready to do test and stay for, for 40 of our kids at this school. We did 50-something at the middle school, so 20 at another school. These are all places where nurses are spending their time first thing in the morning. They're coming in earlier than they're, you know, than, than they usually would. They're setting things up with the custodians. Some teachers are volunteering to help out. Administrators are involved helping out. So it's been, it's been a pretty big burden and cases are continuing to, to rise. I don't have final numbers on this week, but I do, I, I do anticipate it's still a continuing rise. We get our, we get our Bunker numbers tomorrow, usually mid-afternoon or so. So that's the only one I, I'm not aware of. But so far this week, and it doesn't show on this chart because this is from my Friday submission, but it, there's, there's a huge rise right now across the district. So again, the nurses are saying they're not seeing spread in school. So they're saying, oh, we picked up a student in the pool testing, but around, there's, there's no spread. And that's being proven by the test and stay as well. We've only had one student come up positive through the test and stay. Over, well over 100 students being tested, so.
Just before you take that slide down, the vaccination percentages, do we have an update? That's from, the data, the date on that is from?
End of October.
That's the last time they pulled from the system, yesterday. The nurses and I, well, the nurses shared with me the comparative vaccinations that we did with our, you know, who were paying system. I can display those numbers if you want. I didn't know because if they were on, they're not on the agenda, if you wanted to.
What do you mean, who were?
They've changed.
Okay, so you do have them.
Yeah, I just finished them yesterday.
Okay.
Do you want to see them?
Yeah, I asked, yeah, I think.
Then I'd like to ask a question about that too.
So I added central office into this chart. Because they all work for us.
Might need to add magnification into that chart.
Trying, sorry.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Perfect. Sorry. So you see the, the numbers have changed. We have one school in central office at 100%. Across the district, we're looking at 11 people that have accommodations. So that's where you're seeing the not 100%. And then student vaccinations continue to rise slowly, including the, the younger ones at the, the middle school. You can see that the average is, is bumped up at the middle school now to 79.68 for staff and students.
And this is, so there, this represents fully vaccinated, which is why there are no elementary school students represented yet on this.
We, we assume when we get back from vacation that second week in January, we'll start to hit the double vaxxed elementary kids. And they're, they're, we're anticipating a large number.
I'm sorry, Michelle, did you have another question?
Eric asked it because I know that we had made a policy that our employees would be vaccinated by the Monday after Thanksgiving. And so I hadn't seen the numbers change either. So now we've seen the numbers change, and he answered that.
Right. And just for clarification, all of the people, all of the staff who are currently unvaccinated have received an exemption for that?
Correct.
Correct.
They, well, one resigned.
Okay.
And the rest have received a legitimate exemption with a letter that says, this is the expectations. You're expected to be involved in pool testing. So we've given that list to the nurses to manage as well.
Okay. Other questions? All right, thank you. We, next is the discussion again, the, this is regarding the plan for unmasking. While it feels bleak right at this moment, after that last update, the idea is to be planful so that we have some, that we're providing awareness of our, the district's thinking. So that when it becomes possible, we have some thoughts on how the district will be enacting that. Do you want to update us on that, what you're-
Sure. This memo that I originally put out on December 10th with the first, kind of, this is the first volley of the process we would follow. I've added in red some of the changes that came about in discussions with all of you at the last meeting, but also with union reps and principals. The first addition in red, not, this, this means that you cannot choose to go remote. So you can't close your building down and choose to go remote without going through the process that's, that the Department of Education has outlined. They've been very, they've underlined it again yesterday. We were in a superintendent's meeting with the commissioner yesterday. They gave us a number to call if cases go crazy, and, and they will walk us through things, including, you know, support personnel, or different testing regimens, or quarantining certain classrooms. So we just, I just wanted to note that we, we're not able to close schools. If we choose to close schools without the permission of the Department of Education, it's like a snow day. We have to make it up. And then continuing that with the understanding that if students is unvaccinated and a close contact, they're required to wear a mask outside for 14 days. That was an addition from our nursing staff. They, they wanted to be sure something like that was in there. And we believe, there's a meeting tomorrow on testing through the state, and the commissioner has pushed off there any update of their masking stuff until we come back from vacation in January. So we believe these things may change again. So we'll just have to kind of keep our eyes on them.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So at, at my school, if you are unvaccinated and you are a close contact, whether it's in school or out of school, you're out for 10 days.
That was going to be my question as well.
You're not in school. You cannot participate in test and stay if you're not vaccinated where, where I work.
Right, but you would, you would come back on day 10, you still have to wear a mask even outside.
Four, four more days.
Four more days.
Okay.
Yeah, the rule is 14 days, so it extends beyond the 10-day window.
All right.
I didn't, I, I learned that from Leah. Leah had found it from some of the information they were getting from the state. This is the same, just to, where to turn it in. It was, it was not clear about where to turn it in the form. At the request of somebody at this meeting, I added in, these are the steps that we currently have agreed upon with the, the HWA, and have been using all along for probably a year now. Nurses requested that we pulled out the SNAP self-check. They don't really believe they could keep up to it because of all they're doing now. I mean, I don't even know how they're keeping up to what they're doing now, but again, they're going well above and beyond. So my conversation with them would be, if they were to give up anything, that would be something to give up because it would be just constantly compliance, compliance, you know, trying to figure out what to do with kids that didn't check in, or families who forgot, or, you know, so it's a, it's at least I, I think, at least I can push back and give to them. This one maybe needs some explaining, returning to masking. If the number of cases originated out of school reaches five in any seven-day period. So what that means is that we test, we do pool testing. So if we get five tests, five positive cases in, I'll just use as an example, the Bunker school, and they were unmasked, we would return to masking. So within a, within a week-long period, if we got five tests, so it would really be at one point because we test each school once ea- a week on a particular day. So say we test the Bunker on Thursday, Friday, we find out there's seven cases. Monday morning, we go back to masks. Go ahead.
But only among the kids who are participating in pool testing? Or is it any five cases as reported in any, any, any form?
So it'd be, I, I put originated purposefully because what we're seeing is parents are home testing their kids and then calling the nurse and saying, I'm keeping my kid home, they just came up positive. So they don't actually come to school, but we count them in our numbers so that we know how many cases there really are related to school-aged children that we, that come under our school district. So in this case, these would be cases that we find at school, in a school building, during, you know, a weekly testing period, really, is really how it works out. Each building gets one day of pool testing, so.
Meaning my, just, meaning that, or the implication would be that because it was discovered at school, we would know that those five students were positive while they were in school? As opposed to a child that is at home and kept at home, that child may never have walked in the school building while they were positive.
They might, they might have. But, but I also think that we might not know that. I mean, they might do the test at home at the end of the day when the child was in school and was contagious.
Correct, but what, all I'm saying is that if a child tests positive at school, we are certain that they were in school while they were positive.
We also have a fairly strong-
If a child tests positive at home, we don't know.
Right, but, I mean, that particular threshold is entirely dependent on the number of kids participating in pool testing, which we know is lower than it has been. And we also know the state is not advising that fully vaccinated kids participate in pool testing. So to me, that actually seems like sort of an irrelevant stop measure because if all of a sudden, parents who have fully vaccinated students are not participating in pool testing, then the likelihood of us being able to catch those cases is down significantly. So I, I understand what you're saying and agree, you know, I understand what you're saying about the testing at school. But I feel like, sorry, I'm so excited to be close to the mic, I get a little too close. I feel like that's a really, I, I, I understand the idea, but I think in light of increased vaccination and decreasing pool testing and state recommendations against pool testing, I don't think that that metric is helpful. Like, I'd like to see some other way of, of phrasing it. And I guess in my mind, it would be if any school-age students test positive through any means. And the reason I say that is that even though the kids are not transmitting at school, which I think is great, they're still congregating outside of school in the same pods of students. So, you know, kids at Bunker tend to hang out after school with kids from Bunker without their masks on and other things. So even though I don't think it's transmitting at school, it's transmitting within the school population outside of school. I don't know if that makes any sense.
And in shocking form, I agree with Anna. That is not, it, it should be if there are, whatever, 10 cases identified with children from the same school, no matter how they were identified.
Yeah, okay.
Because they are, the social norm is, you know, I hang out, it, almost normal with the same people.
And I, I guess I don't, and I don't, I, I would trust, you know, maybe our school nurses to sort of determine what is that. I, who knows what the right number is that?
Yeah, I was guessing. Honestly, I'm guessing, talking to nurses and looking at averages and-
Yeah, and I like 10 because it's a round number, but it might not be the right number.
Yeah, that's where I started, actually.
But, but again, I just wanted to say, I, I think actually Michelle and I agree. More, not, more often than not, but it's not, it's not, it's not like a comet flying over. We do sometimes agrees, but that is funny, I'm glad you noticed that. I feel like whatever that number is has to be within the same school population, or I mean, I think either by school or potentially by, by grades across school. But I think school is really the, the only place that's meaningful, and that's how we're tracking it. Because we know that, that parents are congregating, and I, I mean, we can't tell people what to do after school, but they're recreating, you know, the Bunker third grade here to there to there. It might not be in this building, but that's, the same kids are together.
But keeping in mind, too, that this policy is, or this, I'm sorry, it's not a policy. This procedure is talking about a school that is unmasked.
Right, just an approved unmasked school, right?
The idea is that it, the environment that you're talking about that currently is occurring outside of school would now be
Inside school.
Inside of the school, so.
Yeah.
Does it include teachers and staff?
So the likelihood that you're going to catch it at school is, that's just, you're not.
Yeah, we could, we could, we could put everybody in it.
All right. I am, I am still quite mindful of our time, and I am going to give us a couple more minutes, and then I'm going to stop. Okay, go ahead, Jen.
My concern is the new variant, the Omicron variant. We know, at least preliminary results are showing us that it's spreading among vaccinated people, that the vaccines aren't providing the safety that they are from the other variants, that it's more transmissible. So we're taking away a mitigation strategy, but we're not adding anything in except a new variant that's more transmissible and hits people who are vaccinated as well as unvaccinated. I just don't think we know enough about that variant, other than we know that it's increasing in pretty much every state they've measured.
Yeah, I mean, I, I read an article today. It's, it replicates in human airways 70 times faster than the original COVID virus. I mean, that, that, you can see that in the, you can see that in the charts that they're publishing from South Africa and, and Europe right now, in the, in the infection rates. And, and that was also, you know, they're, they're pushing that Johnson &amp; Johnson is not a vaccine that will protect you. They, that just came out just before we came in at this meeting.
Right, just, I, I, I-
It sounds like by line of grammar, we're not right.
I just have a clarifying, a clarification.
This is really just, and I said that at the beginning of this section, that this, this is, the point is that we want to just be aware that the, the district is making plans for when this happens eventually.
Yeah.
And we'll get to see this again.
I just have a one, I have a clarifying question because I didn't see it before, but number seven. We're talking just about students, but I think we should talk about all cases at a school, staff and teachers.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, good. Again, this is something that's being worked on, so we'll. I am going to, because I have about seven more minutes, I am going to, if you guys are okay with it, I am going to skip to a, a central element on my chair's report. Okay? I did send out that, some information to all of you today. I'm going to just quickly go through this. I want to just make you aware regarding posting information regarding the elections to the school committee. I sent this information to all of you, but I want to say it publicly, and also get, if anyone has a concern. The, our regional agreement states that the district secretary shall, that's an important word, annually post the notice, and it's very specific about what needs to be in the notice. It's basically the dates of when the nomination papers will be filed, may be filed, and the number of vacancies to be filled. Election day is on April 7th, therefore, counting backwards, the first day the nomination papers will be available is on January 10th. Therefore, the posting needs to happen by January 3rd. I apologize for not realizing in time that that timeline really meant that I should have put the warrant on tonight's meeting. I just was informed about that, and I'm grateful to have been alerted to my error because it means that we aren't going to miss this posting date. But it does mean that it wasn't done properly. I wasn't able to put that warrant onto the agenda. The warrant on the agenda is a way for the, the approval of the warrant directs, it gives a directive that the committee directs the secretary to do this. I spoke at length with our legal representative, Mark Terry. He said to me that we certainly, the secretary certainly can post this based on our regional agreement. He did also advise me that best practice would be to hold, to vote on the warrant ahead of time. I've stated that, given the time of year and the challenges of scheduling another meeting, my intent is to move forward and have the posting done with that information. However, I am also ready to schedule another meeting next week to vote on the warrant. If anyone has any concerns or objections, I'm happy to do that. Okay? Hearing none, I'm going to move forward. All right?
We're good.
Okay, we skipped ahead, it is 10:26. Eric, do you have any highlights on the district goals?
Yep, I'll go quickly through them here. Portrait of the Graduate, third meeting. We reviewed hopes and dreams and aspirations that we were determined in meeting two. We reviewed results of individual submissions, of rankings of our competencies, our core competencies that we're looking at. We've rounded it down to seven. We're now examining those competencies to see if some can be combined into, you know, together to make maybe five or six. You know, we, we may stay with seven, we're not sure. We have a fourth meeting scheduled in early January. We're waiting on graphic design work also, that the company gave us some, some design work. We didn't care for it, so we've asked our students to jump in and take the ball and run with it. So I met with Courtney Cooney, our, our graphic design teacher, and she's going to put her Level 2 kids on it to, to make some much-needed improvements on the designs, or come up with their own, which we think is a better idea.
The designs from the, the professionally paid consultants?
What's that?
The designs that came from the paid consultants we were dissatisfied with?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll, I will-
I liked them.
Take-
Well, I liked two of the three.
Yeah. Yeah, there was, it was a different percentage of, of liking or not, 20%.
Are we going to get a refund on the bill then, since we haven't liked their-
We have a conversation going for a number of reasons with them, so.
Okay, good.
The DEI work continues. There's, there is now a mighty network established for our staff. So our staff works with Regis and her team in a mighty network online, where they can go in and read articles that are posted, and then respond to articles, and regenerate conversations across the, the entire staff. Articles, videos, and, and prompted discussions by Regis and her team, or prompted discussions from people on our, our own staff. You can go in and say, I want to, you know, I just learned about this, boom, and, and present it. We're doing our walkthroughs at all levels of high school. I've scheduled walkthroughs for the next, all the way, almost all the way through April. We started doing instructional look-for's with the leadership team to really hone in on what we want to focus on in our walkthroughs. It's part of my goal to help them to become better instructional leaders over the next couple of years. So that's, we're building on that. And then MTSS, middle school, start work on that on the, tonight, today they had it, 16th. They met with our consultants, and they'll start laying out their process early January. High school will pick it up from there, working with our, with them. Athletic Facilities Improvement Group met on 12/6, new member was welcomed. We're building a comprehensive FAQ document to release in January to help communicate the project details to the public. Invitation sent to Hamilton and Wyndham's FinComs to join the working group. This allowed us to be strategic in discussions about funding through the, through the communities. And then Gale Associates just recently wrapped up site property and wetland surveying this week. So they'll come back to us with their findings, adjustments, changes, and present it at, I think, our next meeting. That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, two quick shout-outs.
Go ahead.
Sorry, two quick shout-outs. I want to shout out to the, the middle school and high school band and music personnel. They crushed it in the past couple of weeks, bringing concerts back for, you know, for two years. I was at a standing-room-only event at, at, double masked, at the middle school concert the other night. It was, it was fantastic, great job, and it was fun to be back in. Great job, and it was fun to be back in. And then DECA, you know, they competed today. They're actually almost probably done with the award ceremony. We had 175 kids in the DECA program, and, and not all of them competed, but a large number of those kids did compete today. So we'll be looking forward to find out tomorrow how they did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I will take a motion to adjourn. It's 10:30. If someone would like to make that motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn at 10:30. Second?
All right, it was seconded by Anna. Anyone have a discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? I am so curious about that, and the motion passed.